This meeting this evening is being convened by video conference in compliance with Governor Cuomo's executive orders, which suspend certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal boards to convene meetings via video conferencing without in-person attendance by the public. In addition, the public has been provided with the ability to view, hear, and participate in the meeting. A transcript will be provided at a later date. There is a quorum of the board members for this meeting. The link to the live stream of the meeting has been provided to the public, and a video of the meeting will be made available on public access television as well as a link on the town's website. Further, all submission materials and agendas are available to be viewed on the website. With that behind us, we do have a quorum, so let's call the meeting to order. Here are a few minutes after seven. And our first matter this evening is the informal appearance before the board. This is the Simpson application for a pool thirty-five Hammond Ridge. Excuse me, thirty-five Hammond Ridge. Application for a site development plan approval and application for stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control. So we last heard this on April twenty, and we're here continuing our conversation.
Well, thank you for having us again, and you gave us a lot of good homework last time, which I think we did a good job at, but we look forward to your feedback. We think there were two items that came up, three items that came up as a result of your feedback from the memo. We subsequently provided those items, but we're told that they might not have been distributed in hard copy format. But happy to address wherever you'd like to start here.
Well, I had one quick question just administratively. Did everyone receive copies of the pictures?
Yes, I did.
Okay, good. The hard copy pictures, yes. Thank you very much for doing that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for those.
No problem. Haven't seen pictures like this in a long time. Usually on my cellphone. Where did you get these printed? The photo mats are gone.
CVS, one hour.
Excellent.
They can print at the pharmacies.
Plus, you get a shot, too. It's great.
Yeah, they're actually from the era of the photograph of the plane, which is behind you on the wall there, am I right?
Exactly.
Great. Well, thank you. They were very helpful, though. Thank you very much.
No problem, of course.
Appreciate it. So are there any material changes that you want to discuss or talk to us about? Other than I know you've made some responses to some of the technical issues that have been raised by town planner, by the town engineer, by environmental officer coordinator. So I don't know if there's anything that you want to tell us materially that's a change from the last time that we should note.
So, you know, I think we, as far as we can tell from our perspective, we've addressed everything. We've addressed everything that's been asked, but you know, obviously your confirmation.
Okay. Good. I had a couple of quick questions before we get into the some of the issues from our staff. On these maps, I noted that there was a well designated. Is that potable water where you're drinking?
Yes.
It's very far from the house, but yes.
I saw that, yeah.
And it's good.
So, but the, I think one of the applications actually indicates that there is public water and that you'd be hooking into the public water supply. So I guess that answer is technically incorrect then if you're just going to use the well water that's there.
Yeah, there's no public water.
There's no public water here, not even close.
Okay.
We'll amend that. Thank you. Good catch on that. I think the one thing, maybe, I don't know if this is a technical detail, but they told us we have to buy the water. Like, somebody has to come with a truck to deliver it.
Right, right. That's normal, yeah.
The water's coming from, but I guess to lightly fill it up, it would come from our well.
Right. And the other issue, I think you also answered, yes, about public sewage, that this would be hooked into a public sewer. I don't think you have sewers up there, right?
This wouldn't, we do not.
Okay, so those are just
Thank you for catching those. We didn't catch them.
Okay. Okay. Sabrina, do you want to run through your issues and questions?
Sure. And just for the board's information, the applicant has responded to all of my comments. So they've addressed everything. You know, the question before you, from my perspective, is in regards to the development coverage. They are exceeding the development coverage by nine hundred and forty-two point one eight square feet. They have, they're proposing to remove six hundred and seventy-eight point nine square feet from the existing driveway and redesigning an area by the house in relation to the driveway for a net reduction of two hundred and ninety-two point nine square feet. So their development coverage exceeds the planning board approved coverage by five hundred and fifty-one point zero two square feet. So, you know, it's really up to the board to determine if you're okay with this exceedance and the mitigation that is being proposed. So that is really the only issue in my eyes. Everything else, it's zoning compliant, it's a type-two action under SECR. Their plans and everything have been adjusted per my request last time. And, you know, a new addition this time around is that there is a clearing and grading limit line on the plans, but it doesn't appear to be impacted by the proposed action.
But I thought I saw in Bob's memo that he thought that the grading line was being changed.
Oh, it does. It does. It's about, it's going into the clearing. I have a screen share. When I read my memo, I'll share it, but
Right, and that's under his purview. But from my purview, the only thing that remains for the board to address or to be satisfied with is the development coverage.
Great. Okay. Super. Thank you. Bob, do you want to run through your comments?
Yes, if it's okay with you, Chairman, I'd just like to share my screen.
Sure.
It affects two of my comments, so let me bring this up if my technical know-how is on point tonight. Did everyone see it?
Yep.
Okay, good. All the different colors, the blue, the yellow, and red. Number one, my comment number one is pertaining to the as-built of the septic system. Basically, what I did, based on the plans that were provided, I just outlined the primary OWTS, which is the onsite wastewater treatment system area in blue. And when you have a one-hundred percent expansion area, it has to mimic the exact same area. So what I did was copied that box from the blue to the yellow just to make certain we have the right amount of expansion area. And I got a different distance from the pool to the edge of the expansion area, which is about sixty-two feet, which is good because the county requires a minimum of fifty feet in this particular case. I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the applicant. You might want to revise that and show that on the plan like that as well. And similar fashion, like I show with the blue and the yellow. That's comment number one. Number two, based on the clearing and grading limit line that was on the vision plat originally approved for the Hammond Ridge subdivision, which you did show, I went one step further and outlined the area of disturbance based on the grading plan on this very same sheet. And as you can see in the green, which I have, that's about an encroachment of about one thousand one forty-two square feet. You might want to show that. And of course, it's up to the planning board to approve this. And if they deemed inclined to do so, I would recommend that they show the new clear integrated and also provide a declaration for town council to review as well. So that's number two. And then the last point is basically, since they're disturbing more than five thousand square feet in the east of Hudson watershed, they will have to require to submit a SWIP to the EC for erosion and sedimentation control only because this does not trip any wires for post-construction stormwater because they're less square feet, but they would have to get a MS four acceptance form and a Y from the EC for that reason. So that was comment number three, and that's the comments I have for tonight, Robert.
Okay, very good. Dennis, you had some comments?
Just one moment. I realized that the documents weren't able to be distributed for everyone to see, but we did have the engineer go over those most recent comments from the engineer. And so we're just going to screen share what we distributed earlier, just so you can see.
Oh, okay, sure.
So Pamela, if you could, if you could make me a co-host so I could screen share for a moment.
You can actually, all the participants can screen share.
Okay, here we go. And so if everyone can see the screen, zoom in.
So he, for question number, part one, he showed the full expansion area instead of just the little lines, you know, as requested, showing the sixty-two-foot distance for the he adjusted where we were going to grade. And so the only piece is that part of the fence would go into that area. And if the planning board were to approve that, then he said he would file the appropriate paperwork that you had pointed out. And I guess if not, then we'll have to rework the fence. And then the third point had just shaded in a huge area that was going to be disturbed. And so he has adjusted that, which you can see on here. I think my glasses aren't that good, but it's something under five thousand.
Well, this is all new material that was submitted tonight because this is the first time I saw it. But I would recommend, and just from a common sense approach, when you're doing clearing and grading limit lines so close to a pool and a grading, I usually recommend it should be at least ten feet away from where they have the grades because I've never seen anything done that seem built that tight. So I would recommend it comes out at least ten feet from where the pool coping is, which would still encroach into the clearing and grading from a practical measure. So it is kind of tight how he does it. I mean, I would not recommend that to the board. I mean, they make the final decision, but just as a recommendation, I would commend at least ten feet around at least where the fence is and where the grading is and probably amend the clearing and grading limit line nonetheless. But if he did minimize the overall disturbance and he's below the five thousand, that's fine. So that's all I have to say on that.
And we'll get your hard copy of this in the poll. We only, you know, we just, this is just
So the planning board will have to weigh in on the issues that staff have raised, and Dennis may have comments on this, I'm not sure. But kind of the next step is a public hearing, and the board will decide if they want to set the public hearing. And so all of the information that you're revising right now and the plans you just showed us will have to be submitted so that we can reference them in our public notice for the public hearing, and they can go into the record. Okay, so you're not missing a step here. I think it's great that you showed what you did so Bob could give you feedback, and the planning board can actually give you feedback tonight. And if they so choose, they'll set a public hearing so we can, you know, move forward with your application.
Do you need these in hard copy, or we've already emailed them to your office? Do you need to drop hard copies off as well?
Typically, we do ask for hard copies, yes.
We'll get them to you this week.
Okay. But you may want to change them before you print them. They may want to, you may want to take heed to what the planning board discusses this evening.
Right, right.
Changes.
Yeah, and I just wanted to weigh in on Bob's comment. I think that could be a little bit unrealistic, especially during the course of construction, having basically, you know, stating the clearing and grading limit lines basically at the coping. It's kind of unrealistic. It's just the necessity of construction. So rather than set yourselves up for something that's unrealistic and maybe too much of a constraint even for later on when you want to enjoy your pool, I think his comment, you might want to make, have your engineer look at that and maybe make a change on that. We understand what you're trying to do. That's fantastic. That's terrific. But don't make it so tight for yourself that yourself, so it becomes unrealistic and too much of a constraint.
I agree.
What wants, we'll put a bigger pool in, too. So happy to do it.
Yeah, I just need to be careful when I say things like this. More careful. Sorry.
Thank you again. Appreciate it.
I had a question about, Dennis, I'm sorry, I cut you off. We're going to make some comments. You had some comments.
Sure, it's appropriate now?
Yes, please.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry. So yes, I, obviously, I reviewed the aerial and the notations and was, you know, able to review the photos. So ultimately, I understand there's a combination here of, you know, existing conditions and generic proposal with respect to botanicals and trees. But I would still think that we would need at some point to have more of a definitive landscape plan as to, you know, where you're proposing to do landscaping. And, you know, I kind of just listed what, you know, that typically would include for review. I don't need to go through each bullet, as you could see in the memo. I just wanted to caution the applicant that, you know, you really can't rely on, nor would I rely on, as part of a review, what a neighboring property would propose to do, plan to do, has as existing conditions, because that all obviously would be subject to potential change and out of your control. So it really is sort of dedicated just to the applicant and their property as far as what that landscape plan would be. As I did previously state, you know, some of that concern, which was brought to my attention, just has to do with that sort of shot and viewscape with respect to the contouring and with respect to where the pool location is. And I think that did come out a little bit in one of the photos that you had provided, where you're still able to sort of get a view of a back of a home through what would be just existing deciduous trees fairly spaced on low lawn. And then I guess the final really is dependent upon, my final comment is really dependent upon what your approach is or is not with respect to addressing any overage of coverage. If you're just, you know, going to play in pavement world, so to speak, that's fine. I just kind of offer it as a, as an addition and or alternative that, you know, there's other areas potentially such as that, you know, if you wanted to, you know, remove what is sort of maintained regular turf cover and elevate those plantings, you know, in terms of wooden species, not have it so regularly maintained, and even connect to some of those areas that, you know, kind of exist within, you know, your property and then the broader subdivision, that is something that, you know, would be viewed upon favorably as well. You know, should there be an issue with any of the hardscape reductions or configuration changes? And that's it.
Thank you so much for that. We didn't have this fully prepared until midday today. But we, I'll let Jenny take you through what she's done, based on your comments, which are excellent. So thank you.
Right. So we, you know, we're trying to like figure out how to, you know, incorporate what you were suggesting. And so we basically circled on here. So I have like a section where at the fence, we were going to put boxwoods because we thought that's a nice evergreen, you know, for year-round coverage. And so that would be like on the hill coming down behind the fence. And then I know you said we can't rely on what the neighbors are doing, but they are putting trees in this week. A line of evergreens up like behind our existing maples and towards that existing natural. And so we wanted to put some evergreens and continue that line kind of in front of the existing natural area as well and put like some persythia plants, you know, some kind of like flowering things to make it, you know, you know, more plants and kind of like just fill in some spaces there a little bit. But, you know, we're obviously open to suggestions.
Again, I don't know if I'm necessarily in that camp of suggestions or propose something, and then at least I'm able to sort of direct comments. And in cases where I'm able to, you know, one direction or the other, you know, to provide alternatives. I don't, I don't necessarily view this, and nor is this discipline so hard and fast, so to speak, and it really shouldn't be. So, you know, it's not, it's not quite to the level of specifications, let's say, to a building code. But, you know, I, I would, you know, obviously review something like this with respect to incorporating my comments and would be considered a landscape plan and be happy to provide comments at that time.
Thank you very much. We'll get you, we'll get you these details, and we look forward to any additional comments you have on it.
I agree with Dennis on all of that. One of the things that I noticed here is, well, first of all, the drawing that you just had, whoever posted that drawing that was just up, looked to be a, a map with topography pre-development. And it is, it doesn't represent the actual existing topography because if, I mean, it clearly doesn't. If you look at, if you, for instance, if you look at the sheet number A zero zero five, there is an aerial photograph, and you can actually see a sort of a semicircular pad that was carved out of this slope with some, probably with some, certainly with some cut and probably some fill in order to create the pad for the house. So I think that we need to have an accurate survey to really understand what's going on here, not only with respect to how the pool fits in, but with respect to how the water's going to flow, where the landscape is going to be, and how that's all going to work. So I think there's something that's critical, I think, that's missing here that we would need to have in order to take that next step. Unless it's that information is somewhere in a previous package that I missed. But I really think we have to have that. We require that for all of our applications. With respect to the pool, and you can see in the photographs that a pad has been cleared because there is this wide sweeping arc of, it looks like a cut within that that slope that comes down to where the pad, to where the house is. I think that you might consider, because if you actually locate the pool now, the drawing, if you locate the pool in the existing topography, you're going to find that that pool sits at the toe of the slope. And it seems to me that the pool sitting at the toe of the slope is just not such a great thing because you're going to get drainage off of that slope. And it sits very close to the toe of the slope. So I have a couple of suggestions here. Also, the grading and clearing limit line, we're saying, well, maybe we just need to move it. I'm sorry, we need to move it like ten feet in order to give a little bit of breathing room for the pool. I think that that probably ought to be more like twenty or thirty feet. And just in order to sort of be able to maintain the ground around the pool rather than just having, you know, a wild forest there with, you know, whatever kinds of vegetation is going to grow in there. So I would, I guess I would suggest that, first of all, I think we probably require a topography plan that shows the existence, so we can understand what's going on here. Then I would suggest that you think about maybe grading, regrading that area where the pool's going to go, so it's not sitting at the toe of the slope. And then we might suggest that, well, we'll give you some relief on the grading and clearing limit line in order to make this actually work for you with some compensating move somewhere else on the property where we then take back that for grading and move the grading and clearing limit line in order to compensate for that, where it doesn't cause you any, you know, any problems with use of your property. So it seems to be that there are some pretty, this is a critical missing piece of information. And if we get that, I think we can help you end up with a, I think, a better plan. But I don't think that we can move forward without that information.
That makes a lot of sense. We were actually advised not to move the grading and limit lines. And if we can move them, of course, I think we'll have a better product here.
No, I understand. I understand. It was prudent for somebody to tell you that.
So we're, you know, let's push that back to our architect to move them a little bit. You know, we're not as keen to, the pool is about three or four feet from the slope. It's intentional, and the pool is going to sit higher than the bottom of that slope. And so they were very comfortable that any water that would come down, plus there's a swell up top that catches as well, there's two swells built in, and they were very confident that the water would not travel back up into the pool, even with the current tightness.
Fair enough.
But I like, why not make it a little bigger? If it's, if it sounds, but how do we work on this with you? Is it only in this forum, or should we take this issue offline to the forum of working with it, to getting you? Should we don't come, like, to fixing this last piece here?
Well, there's nothing we can do as a board that isn't online and public. So you would need to work with staff, I think, in order to get the documentation in line and any ways in which the staff could recommend mitigating or mediating. They know the board pretty well in order to prepare the documents to come back. I think I'm stepping on the chairman's toes here because this is his speech, but I think that that's the direction I would suggest to go.
Right. We just wanted to be efficient with your time. We didn't want to come back with something that's not correct. So we'll, we'll staff, and I hear two points here. One is, because it solves two things, to move that grading and limit line back for a couple of purposes, this as well as the other purpose, just for construction ease. And then I understand that you guys want, which is, we're happy to do it. Plenty of property here, and it's less grass to mow. We just take an equal and offsetting area of the grading limit line elsewhere on the property because you want to see it balanced. You don't want to just see us developing everything.
Let me, let me just be sure that we understand that this notion of of moving the grading and clearing limit line to give relief to the pool is just my recommendation. You'd probably want to poll the rest of the board tonight to find out whether they're amenable to that, to that strategy.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Robert?
Yes.
Could I interject one thing here on the topic of clearing grading? Mr. Simpson, could you pull up that one drawing that showed like the planting circles that Dennis was speaking of? I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that, for some reason, I'm going to draw around it right now. You see this area here?
Not yet.
It's in green.
Ah, there, okay.
Yeah. Might as well, if you're going to be changing the clearing and grading, you might as well extend this out to encompass all of the expansion area.
Agreed.
Some reason, when they came up with the plan years ago, the expansion area wasn't drawn properly. So, you know, if you ever have to replace the expansion area, you would have to go back to the planning board to do it. So now's the time, I would recommend. Of course, the planning board makes that determination to extend that clearing and grading outwards at least ten, fifteen feet past where that expansion area is. So in the future, if you do need it, you don't, you're already approved for it.
And actually, between your green lines and where the pool is, we have, I guess that's outside the clearing and grading limit lines, but based on the photographs and the aerials, that looks to be lawn anyway also, right? The slope is lawn?
Yes.
Yes.
So, I mean, to a certain extent, we have these clearing and grading limit lines that are artificial. I think they're imposing a little bit too much of a constraint on the applicant here. I'm more interested, I mean, we can go back and forth on the clearing and grading limit lines, but one of the real issue that we have here is the coverage issue. And I support Tom's notion on this. I think it's a good one. I think it gives the applicant a little bit more flexibility. It's a relief and helps, I think, as Tom said, produce a better product. But on the other issue, coverage issue, I had a question. You know, we have one of these photographs that you have here of the driveway and deck at the basement level. And that is an area that I presume is also the one that we wish to pave in front of those doors. Is that a garage? Is that currently a garage? It looks more like a shed? Or, you know, what I'm driving at is the necessity to expand asphalt up in that area if it's currently used as a shed where you are getting stuff in and out from underneath storage or if it really is a garage that needs to be paved, because that's, that's an important issue, so.
I mean, we're using it as, I don't know how we have so much stuff. We're using it for storage.
If you're like me, you've got so much stuff because you have so much space to put stuff in. That's the only reason.
And we had very little, we moved here from the city. I don't know what happened.
Well, I guess the question is, how important is it if it's just for storing stuff, you know, lawn mowers and equipment and maybe whatever it is, furniture, et cetera, that we actually pay that? Because that's picking up a good deal on the addition, what, three hundred and eighty-five square feet of additional pavement? You're proposing to remove some to offset that. I would question the viability and the necessity that you, you know, decrease the width of the driveway itself by two feet. I'm not quite sure that is all that useful to the environment and might actually be more of a strain for you. That's a little bit more unreasonable. A twelve-foot-wide driveway, the existing driveway width seems to be fairly sane to me. Lowering it to ten feet might start to become a little bit more extreme. But perhaps you can speak to this three hundred and eighty-five feet of driveway extension, whether that's really all that necessary, and that would really help us with coverage if it's not necessary.
So it's really interesting you bring that up because when we designed and put in that extra garage, we originally designed it with grass being in front. And we actually were going to take off even the little hook that's there. That's a relatively new addition. It's called a year old. The building department said if the door is the width of a car, you must maintain asphalt in front of it. But we originally didn't want to maintain asphalt in front of it because then we knew we would. But we originally didn't wanna maintain asphalt in front of it because then we knew we would, we would have been able to skip the planning board. And pick up enough square footage to not even be here.
How could you do that to us?
So that's what, you know, just to give you the the trip of how we got here. So I think we have to, we have is, you know. We're, you know, we're, we're, we'll do whatever you tell us, but we, I think we have to put asphalt in front of that for the, for the, um, for the building department.
Really, Sabrina?
Well, it was actually a specific negotiation. They actually said I would have had to put a smaller door that was less than the width of a car. Then I wouldn't have to put the asphalt.
Yeah, I'm I'm pretty sure it's a building code.
It's a code. He told me, he's like, he was very, he's like, you could put glass if you want, you could put, but if it's the width of a car, and it's a car, you can't do it. And so I had to make the decision then, because we knew we'd come up against this issue here. We, when we had this whole master plan of the deck and the garage and the pool, we tried staying under the coverage. Where we got blindsided and why we're here today is because over the fifteen years that we lived here, we put in some stone walls and things like this, we used more coverage than we thought. And so we didn't realize that we burned up all our coverage until till this project was on on deck.
Is that in any way waivable, Sabrina?
Yeah, it's it's up to the planning board, wait a minute.
I mean, the asphalt thing, the asphalt.
No, it's a building code.
How about if we put a divider in the middle of the door?
But but here's the thing, they can request a variance right before the zoning board of appeals, but there's really no hardship here. You know, what you're discussing is development coverage.
And if it's, is it a zoning code issue or a New York State building code?
It's a building code issue.
If it's building code, then they'd have to go to the New York State, the code council. A nightmare process.
The real question is, is what they're doing, is it something that the planning board supports? Do you wanna see more mitigation or do you wanna see a further reduction in the coverage? Right? I I mean, as as Bob, as you have said, you know, based on the photographs. Beyond the clearing and grading limit line is currently grasped. Do you wanna see that return back to natural area? You know, and and what's the value in that given the proximity to the expansion area? I mean, these are all the things that that the planning board needs to kind of balance in your decisions. And, you know, the the amount of overage that this application is, is, you know, if you look at the applications that you've seen previously. You know, line them all up and see how much coverage we're really talking about, you know, these are the things that you need to balance in your decision making.
Right, like, I'm asking the question just to see if there's some way that we could make some headway really quickly with the driveway stuff.
I think, I think the planning board doesn't, I mean, thank you, Sabrina, but I don't think we need instructions. So just so that applicants know, we don't need necessarily instruction on what we need to balance. So what I would like to know, if, and maybe it's in the documentation, forgive me if I didn't pick it up. But maybe Sabrina has it or or Bob Cioli has it. What what percentage of the allowable coverage is five hundred square feet? What is five hundred square feet? What percentage is allowed? I mean, if we're going only asking, if if the applicants only asking for a few percentage points. It seems to me that's kind of de minimis.
It's about, it's about under five percent, just.
Exactly, right. I was gonna say about five percent or less, yep.
And just couple that, we're less than, we have a unique situation. Remember, we're two and a half acres here. If this house was anywhere else in town. We we're like not even close to our coverage limits. Like, this is only because we're in a conservation easement. And when this was originally approved, the footprint, like, when we built the house, we lived in a seven hundred square foot apartment in New York City. So we didn't even think about these kind of things. But had we, when we built the house, used a bunch more coverage, building the house, then we would have had twenty-five percent more. To use now. So it's, it's, we just, you know, it's all based on the original footprint of the house, not based on the town's. Rules based on our two and a half acres. Like, we have a very small amount of coverage for having two and a half acres.
Yeah, be that as may, but the conservation rules apply here. So I I understand. But we're, we're sort of bound by those, by those numbers.
I would also add that, you know, that this this coverage issue is is certainly. A concern for me as well, especially, you know, we talked about this last time with a different African, just the idea of justification and precedent. And given that this is a conservation easement, it sort of. Heightens the, I think, from my perspective, heightens the the importance of at least some kind of justification. For relaxing the coverage rules. And that doesn't mean that I I am not ready to speak for the board, doesn't mean I'm not open to that. Sabrina's point about either mitigation or offsetting is is important. Tom's question about the percentage of overage is also quite relevant again because. While the applicant is concerned about the applicant's property and rightfully so. We have to be concerned about previous and forthcoming applications asking for similar things. And so. You know, I would love to, it it it's a small amount.
Sitting here, I gotta, I'm on a Zoom.
And.
I'm in a Zoom meeting and of course I'm last on the.
And Jerry, you're also not muted.
Still on item one and they started at seven.
Jerry, Jerry, use yourself. Jerry.
Before you say anything incriminating, Jerry.
I can hear you.
Anyway, so just just to wrap up, I would love to figure out a way to minimize that overage as much as possible. And and sort of set you all on your merry way.
Just to clarify, the reason we have the overage, and by the way, in terms of mitigation. Since living here in the last fifteen years, we planted forty trees on this property. Like, in other words, we we put like, there's all kinds of plantings and mitigation that we've been doing for the last fifteen years. And the overage that is driven, it it's been driven by building a large stone wall across the face of our property. You know, and when, when you guys think about this, you know, our choices to remove some of the stone wall that most of our neighbors think looks really nice. To to make up some coverage, kind of didn't feel right in terms of of how we use the coverage.
Well, I understand that, but we could, you know, get into sort of a esoteric debate about this, but presumably the stone wall. Returns to the value of property and returns to your 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 enjoyment of the property. So it's not sort of something that comes off the table because it doesn't do those things. It was. So I I wouldn't recommend that you take down the stone wall. Certainly, it would be, I guess, would be your choice to do so if you wanted to, to get back into. The coverage that allows you to do the pool. But I wouldn't recommend taking that down, excuse me. There's some other way to to reduce it and get into a a more comfortable number that. You know, I I understand what Eldad is saying and we really need to be careful about, need to be careful about setting precedents. This is one of those things that we need to be sure if we grant a relief. Coverage, that we document very, very carefully the why of it. And that the why of it be something which is particular to this piece of property. And would, and wouldn't necessarily open the door for, you know, the next, you know, ten, ten applicants to come in and say, well, gee. You know, you gave this guy or these people five hundred square feet or you gave him two thousand square feet. Uh, what's your argument that that we can't get it? So I I don't know how we would construct that argument. I don't know at what point in terms of the percentage over. Being that careful about constructing the argument matters that much. But I I do agree with Eldad that we need to be careful about if, I think if we do this, we need to really understand what's so special about. This application that we would do it.
That's a good point, because on the last application, Dick made the observation. And supported the application because of the environmental, environmentally important issues and gift backs that were being made by that applicant. And I think that's the opportunity here. So perhaps we can identify a couple of thoughts that the applicant consider. I I I'm personally at the point where in terms of the coverage, I think. Trying to shrink anything here now that we we know we can't do anything with this back door for the garage. I I think some of these things are, you know, unrealistic. And and so I think the key on this is, this is a conservation easement development. It was one that was considered to be environmentally sensitive. I think the invitation to the applicant is. Give us something that we can earmark to say, this is the environmental giveback for what you wanna do with your pool and the coverage. And to Eldad's point, we'll send you on your merry way and be done with this. So I think, just to give an example, with this other application. That applicant was in concert and coordination with Dennis Corelli. Returning a good, some portion of what had previously been lawn to natural areas. You seem to have an extensive lawn here. Maybe that makes sense for you guys. Maybe there's some areas here that could be, you know, planted with native species, not mowed and, you know, further away from the house, et cetera. Uh, that we can use and and point toward and earmark as the environmental. Exchange, if you will. So I I thought that was a very good point with the last application and I think that probably is the best. Invitation for you to to move this forward and get this going. I'm not sure where those spots are and you might wanna work with Dennis on that. Because anything that he recommends will probably serve you well with us. So that might be something to do.
An idea of magnitude, so if we're asking for five hundred feet, if we return seven hundred fifty feet, fifty percent more than we're taking. Is that, is that enough or does it have to be multiple? Or what are you looking for?
Can I just try to comment? Cause I I wanna respectfully recalibrate your thinking. So earlier, there was a comment made with respect to the number of trees that you've planted to this point. And I'm just trying to sort of, even with my memos, kind of emphasize. And 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 I respect that not everybody sort of has this. Vision or or, you know. Sort of view that, you know, when you look at, you know, a piece of property, how one could be unique versus the other. Not only in terms of how you would design the property, but how would it complement with with the surroundings? So I I I think, you know, what the chairman was saying was the prior pool application, which was also on Hammond Ridge. They had an opportunity, you know, from these two fingers, for lack of a better description. That just happened to be situated in between areas that sort of maintained. An undisturbed natural landscape and it just made sense to sort of connect the dots there. Before we got into the numbers, before we got into five hundred, seven hundred, is it two to one, is it one and a half to one? There was just sort of this overall. View and appreciation for, huh, this is good opportunity. And it may even have been enough of an opportunity that if they fell, you know, five square feet short. I would have been like, sold. It still made sense because you were sort of providing. A restoring of a corridor, a a a contiguousness to 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 the habitat. So I tried to mention in my memo, you have, I think, some areas to have to potentially tie into. And I think that's kind of where, you know, some of that uplift and value add, there's an opportunity here. Outside of worrying about the calculus and and the spreadsheet aspect. So so I I I'm hoping that that's somewhat helpful because I know it it can get frustrating when, you know, numbers are being thrown around. And then ratios of mitigation are being thrown around. But I I really think that there's a, there's a contextual part here that kind of moves outside of the numbers. And into what is the value add?
I think that's very well said. You know, this is, this is, these, it's, it's important not to treat these things as single issue problems, right? And, because everything is related. And I I just happen to also sit on the 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 conservation board in town. And and if if, sitting, if if we had a member, another member of the conservation board here. Listening to this discussion, they'd say, wait a minute, we have the opportunity here to actually, it's a conservation easement. So we have an opportunity to actually to return some some land, which is actually not only gonna be good for habitat generally. But it's gonna enhance the conservation subdivision itself. And that should be worth something, right? That there should be some trade for that. If we, if the town can get that. So I support Dennis's point one hundred percent on. Let's not just deal with this as five hundred feet. Let's deal with it as a total sort of a a design problem. And then, and if there's, find opportunities to do this. And I think that we may have the justification that we need. Move forward on some basis for some amount yet to be determined of overage that you that you come up with.
This is great. So, I mean, we, just to, you know, put some brass tacks to this, we proposed a small area here, but based on the discussion. If we just make this big area here. Oh, well, you maybe catch your ass, but to the right quadrant here that I'm zooming in here.
We can see it.
Very large area here, you know, just expand this elliptical. Of course, we'll get it to you in, you know, in in plan format. We could, we're happy to do that. And we could just bring that all back to natural. That's, you know, you know, a nice big area and it connects into some natural. That's already existing down here as well. If that's pleases, you know, if that helps the board.
Well, that, that may be a help and I, but keep in touch with Dennis so that. You're not just making isolated. High vegetation areas with trees and bushes that don't really hook up with other. Pieces of the conservation area that would allow a corridor for animals to move through. And, you know, and that's what we're trying to conserve with all of this. It, you know, to have nice people with nice animals and and critters to, you know, to keep it in in a. Somewhat of a condition that it used to be, you know, forty years ago or whatever. So.
I think that's a great idea. So we'll, 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 we'll add a bunch more stuff back there. Let's plant, we'll plant on that and we'll get that team ready.
Talk to Dennis about it.
And talk to Dennis about it.
But we have lots of deer and turkeys that like it.
Turkeys, okay.
We want to end up with something other than a tick farm.
Ah, yes, yes, our kids have both had Lyme disease.
Yes, yes.
The yard already, so.
Well, do we have enough sense here in terms of what we're looking for? What I would love to be able to do is, with the board's approval, is to. Think that we have enough information, we frame this tightly enough. So we know what the applicant should be doing and what we should be looking at next time. Do we want to schedule this for another informal or move it forward to a public? I'm happy.
I would, I don't mind having us move forward to, you know, the full session. Because I think we're really, we're, we're past the hard stand stuff. And now we're trying to figure out how to get value added. Through being more consistent with what this kind of property should be. You know, in essence, the conservation easement was created.
Right.
So I think, I think if Matt and Jenny can get everything together with their professionals and work closely with Dennis. You know, then we have a good chance to have something that would really add value to the area.
Okay.
Yeah, I I concur. I think we made a good progress today and and specifically, it's just sort of highlighting the issues. And now it's just a question of advancing towards some sort of resolution, but I'm I'm comfortable. Putting in to a public hearing.
Okay, Tom?
Well, the only thing that that sort of gives me a little bit of pause here is that we really don't have a, really don't have a site plan. I mean, if you don't have topography, then you really don't have a site plan. And it's, I mean, there's, there's no way we're gonna approve this application, I don't think, without actually an accurate topography and site plan and all that. And all that's that that is the basis for an accurate site plan. So I, it's, never was there in my memory when. That we have gone to public without actually having an accurate site plan. So procedurally, that gives me a little bit of pause. I would suggest that when we see that site plan, there may be other things that come to mind about this. That we just can't see and can't know at this point.
Right. Well, we would not be under any obligation to close a public hearing if we still had additional information or if there's any comment from the public as well. So we certainly, certainly have that option.
Right, that that that's the caveat that I was gonna make is that, well, we can just, you know, say, well, you know, this isn't working, right? You guys come back again. So in the interest of, I'm I'm always in the interest of finding ways to make the process smoother. And not so lengthy. So I'm, I'm okay with going to public with that, with that sort of caveat in mind.
Okay.
I think that's a good point and that, you know, we'll see, hopefully, you know, documents that just don't have contour lines. But, you know, that they, you know, show that, well, these are two foot lines or whatever. You know, so we can get a half a sense as to how steep this property is. And, you know, I'll make a drive, I have to make a drive, drive around past the property, get a sense of that too.
Good.
I'll say it.
Good. So, um, what we'll do is please, you know, work with Dennis, work with Bob, work with staff, uh, and of course your engineer. And is, do we need a motion, Jennifer, to schedule a public hearing or just schedule it? Motion? Okay. Is there a motion then to schedule this for a public hearing? And of course, it would be nice to have a date, I guess.
So moved.
Is there, well, let's get a date, I guess, first. Do we want to know, uh, what dates are available, Felicia and Sabrina?
Well, what I, what I want to say is if there's going to be revised plans submitted, we would typically notice the public hearing on those revised plans. So the onus really is on the applicants as to when they think they will have revised plans set to submit so that we can notice them for the public hearing.
Good point.
Yeah. And that, unless I'm mistaken, that's more than just bubbles saying we're going to put some plants here. Are we asking for a landscape plan of some kind?
Yes, yeah.
Well, the board has asked for a landscape plan. You've asked for a revised site plan. Um, you, you know, the, these are, these are engineered plans. We've talked about moving the, uh, clearing and grading limit line, fully identifying the expansion area.
Yep. Yep, there's a lot. So, um, Jennifer, can we, can we schedule a public without a date and, uh, to be, to be determined upon receipt of these documents?
Yes, yes, you can do that.
Why do I do that? Does that make sense? Okay.
Yeah, I, 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 I think that it makes sense for the applicants to, you know, put the onus on the Simpsons to get the revised plans in. And then when they do, we will schedule the public hearing for the board with proper notice to the public.
Right. Okay. Good. Um, is there a motion to, uh, schedule a public hearing to this application? Date to be determined upon, uh, receipt of documents by staff?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good. See you soon.
Wait a minute, uh, Bob, uh, hold on, Simpsons, I have a question for you. Are you still there?
Yes.
Or did you rush out of the room the way I would have? That, that photograph behind you, is that a DC five or a DC six?
You, you know, people keep asking me and I'm not sure and I need to find out.
I'm not, I'm not sure either. Uh, the reason I ask is my father, he spent, uh, he was a career Navy pilot coming out of the war. He decided to stay in and he flew in the DC five for like two years in the, the sort of the military, uh, passenger air force that was set up back then. So I'm just curious.
I, I, I'm curious now too, so.
Well, we expect a report with the, uh, documents. Thank you very much.
Thank you everyone. Take care.
See, that buried my agenda. Okay, we move now to our second item, uh, which is the Reifman, uh, application, 1267 Hardscrabble Road. This is a site development plan, wetlands permit and street, excuse me, tree removal permit plan. So we receive very, uh, comprehensive plans from your architect. Thank you very much. And, uh, is there anything that you or your architects or representatives want to, uh, say?
Uh, yes, we, we have some things to say about it.
Sure, please.
Not, not, uh, you know, we're not the experts, but we are not, uh, we cannot go forward with that, uh, plan. The third plan, we had agreed to a much simpler, um, site plan. Um, there are a lot of problems with that third plan. One of them is I, I don't believe that we should have to, uh, cut down the woods that, um, are like right now, if you drive by our house, full woods on the other side of the, uh, stream. And so we don't think we, we should do anything with that. And cutting down those trees and putting bushes to me seems like a not good idea ecologically or, um, aesthetically. And our whole entire house, the way it is right now is, is, it's just woods. So to, you know, I, I just, so anyway, that's my unofficial comment.
Okay.
We can't, we're, we're not going to, we're not going to do that. We're not, we're not going to cut down the woods. That's, it's one of the reasons why we love this house and why we stayed in this house. And, um, one of the things that we think makes the house special.
Yep.
So, so, so Mr. Chairman, maybe we should back up and talk about what this project is.
Yeah, yeah, please.
So, so, and, and it, I don't know, Mr. and Mrs. Reifman, if you want your architect to describe your project and then we can talk about staff comments on your project and kind of who you're feeling on that. Because right now, this is the first appearance of your application before the board.
Oh, okay. I thought we already had one. So it's my, my. Um, so our project is where, uh, we would like to put a screened in porch. Um, our house has no screened in porch and I think it would greatly add to the value of our house to have a screened in porch. Um, our house is in a weird position being, uh, in the corner of a triangular site. And so anything that we do is hemmed in by the setback rules and the stream. So we came up with a plan where we could do minimal encroachment, uh, for us, uh, uh, screened in porch. And we wanted to put a, uh, hot tub in the screened in porch. That was the plan.
Yep. Okay. Good. Um, Sabrina, do you want to run through your comments?
Sure. Um, and so, so just to, to, uh, to, to put some framework around this, um, the applicant is looking for approval to add in addition to their home, which includes an enclosed swimming pool spa area and, um, a new, uh, additional patio on the exterior to the, to the house. The application includes the removal of one tree. There's a wetland buffer planting plan being proposed and installation of two rain gardens are proposed as mitigation for the disturbance of the proposed project. This lot is a corner lot which fronts on Hardscrabble Road and Valley Lane. The site is diagonally bisected by a stream and its associated wetlands. So, so as the applicant was saying, the house is a very unique, unique site. It's a very difficult site. The existing house is located in the northeast corner of the lot and it was built in 1937, almost wholly within the 50-foot rear yard setback and within the wetland buffer. So this house pre-existed the town's zoning code and environmental regulations. And that's important for the board to understand because today I don't know that this house would be built the way it's being built. So it's very unique. Um, the, I, I have to say that the plans that were submitted have to be one of the most complete sets of information that I have seen come through my office in a very long time. So, so very, very, um, many accolades to the architect and the submission of this application. It was very well done. Um, the project self is considered a type two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Um, the porch itself is 676 square feet, including, enclosing the pool and spa. And there's a 224 square foot patio, um, which does not reach the levels of any type unlisted or type one action under SEACR. So, so this is a type two action. Uh, there is a zoning performance table on the plans, which denote, um, which note that the project does not meet the rear yard setback requirement of these R1A zoning district 50 feet. So the proposed addition will be located 20 feet within the setback, requiring a 30-foot variance from the zoning board of appeals. Because it is a newer dish addition and zoning is in place today, the applicant will need to go to the ZBA if the planning board, um, conditions or approves of the project for that variance. Um, and you have a choice to either condition it as part of a decision or you can ask them to go to the ZBA prior to making a decision. Um, the application itself meets both building and development coverage limitations for the property. Um, and as I mentioned earlier, the proposed action is wholly within the 100-foot wetland buffer. Um, and, uh, Dennis, I'm sure has comments on this and that's the extent of my comments. Everything else is, um, is in keeping with the zoning requirements of 1937. And there's only one, one area that needs a variance today.
Hey, Sabrina, can I ask a question?
Sure.
And maybe this is obvious and maybe it's a dumb question, but.
Never a dumb question, Al, then.
Just you wait. But why, why is this application before us? Why is this application before the board? Is it because of the wetlands issue?
Yes.
But that's it, that's.
There's, it is before the planning board because the building department has a, um.
Who's this?
Because of use. That if you have a pool within, a covered pool, excuse me, within 50 feet of any property line, you will have to go before, we will need the planning board approval.
Yes. Yeah. So, so it is, it is the use of the pool and it's distant to the property lines.
Well, it's covered. That's the whole key. It's covered.
Correct.
So it's a, it's a bulk, bulk regulations law that, uh, Tom looks at.
But that's not a, not a zoning thing?
No, it's not a zoning thing.
Okay.
It is under, excuse me.
It's in the zoning.
It is a zoning requirement under use.
Yes.
And that's what, that's what Tom picked up, the building.
Right, right. The building inspector referred it to the planning board due to the use of the pool in proximity to the property line. So it is within this, this matter is within the zoning code, but it does not involve setbacks.
Right. And if the pool wasn't covered, it wouldn't have to be before the planning board.
Correct.
But it's. It would still go for, before the ZBA, right?
That's right.
Yeah, of course.
Before the planning board.
Right, got it. Got it. Thank you. So, uh, I, I, I have a couple of questions, but maybe, uh, Dennis, do you want to help us out with what you've seen here?
Um, sure. So I, I mean, I did have the opportunity to visit the property and, uh, uh, meet with the architect, uh, and the owner. Um, so I, uh, I just will start off by saying that, um, I guess, um, maybe in responding to my memo, uh, if you heard any of my conversation regarding the prior applicant, um, I don't think, and I wasn't the intention, uh, in consideration of what would be an alternatives analysis. It doesn't necessarily mean to nuke or whack, uh, an area. It, you know, could see if the possibility exists to, uh, functionally uplift or complement. So I certainly am not looking to put my fingerprint on anything in the natural landscape. Uh, in fact, it's even better if it doesn't, you know, know I was there. So I'm just going to start off by saying that. Um, to start with the tree removal permit application, I just wanted just some specificity because I know it's just one tree, uh, but I did have someone contact me, I guess, who was notified, uh, that had questioned or concerned. So I just wanted to be accurately depicted, uh, with respect to, um, number stems and dynamic, uh, for the, uh, application. Um, the other item on this property is there was a wetlands permit that was granted, uh, by the former environmental coordinator, I guess, for construction of a, uh, screened porch. And the condition of that permit was a five-foot buffer on the house side of the water course channel be established and extend the length of the property from the southwestern corner to where it crosses the driveway. Um, that was never installed. So there is a little bit of a hybrid going on here where uh, I was amenable to, and it made sense because of, you know, everything being proposed at once, that that needs to be satisfied in addition to the mitigation for this project, just to avoid that concept of double credit for single action, single area, et cetera. So that's why, um, some of my comments that were in the follow, you know, why I was sort of requesting uh, additional area to what was originally proposed, because we just sort of need to, uh, to, to account for, for that area in addition. And in conjunction, I, you know, rain gardens, you know, by, by definition, you know, more of a stormwater treatment sort of design and stormwater treatment and wetlands, those worlds will come together unless stormwater treatment systems are not maintained, they're abandoned, and then start to take on the role and function of a wetland. And then lo and behold, you know, 20, 30 years later, they become regulated wetlands, but it really doesn't go in the other direction. So that square footage as well was something that I needed to sort of direct the applicant that had to be accounted for in addition to what was not, uh, completed in the first place. So I was just offering recommendations as to, you know, I understand the applicant's concern for wanting to keep sort of an open, uh, view shed. So I was just trying to come up with other potential alternatives or recommendations to the, to the environments. I mean, obviously we have a wooded understory that's been, you know, decimated by year and bikes only seem to have a regrowth of Japanese barberry. So if that was the case and you wanted to propose understory plantings, I don't think that would result in, you know, damaging or detrimental effects to the trees. And it would provide that, as I say before, functional uplift to said system. So I, I, I'm not looking for, again, the nuking of, uh, of anything. So, so that was just sort of, um, my comments with respect to the broad square footage. And then I just got a little more specific because I felt the plan had, um, you know, understandably species, okay, and, uh, the, the diagrammatic and conceptual of, of, of what those plantings would be. But I just wanted more specificity in terms of spacing and, and orientation. And then in relation to the open, you know, view shed area, you know, she obviously, uh, doesn't want to propose woody plantings on either side. So you're looking at sort of more of a, uh, of a meadowy emergent edge open area. So I just want to get context for, you know, how wide are we asking for? And since it is mitigation, I, I thought, you know, and it is, you know, as she had mentioned, such a, it is a great feature on the property and it is a great landscape. If there's any appreciation for the fauna of the area to definitely, um, include, you know, some wildlife, uh, you know, structures or designs or amenities that would, you know, actually help, you know, improve, prove that function. So those are, you know, and I know we've, we, we have received some comments, uh, or those response to comments and some redesigns, you know, earlier today, which I'm really not prepared to comment on, but obviously I just wanted to broadly say I appreciate, um, uh, the consideration of, of, of those comments that I made in this moment.
And it's, can I, can I just say one thing? Then your calc, in our calculation, we did include the 264 square feet of the prior porch, which was a sunroom actually, and that was included. We're adding 900 square feet of impervious surface plus that 264 square feet. And when we discussed it on site, I was under the impression, me and the, our Alex, our environmental specialist consultant was under the impression that you would include or accept the rain garden at 300 square feet. But if you don't, um, then we'll add the 300 square feet back in. So Alex is here and she can address, um, or maybe answer any questions. I'm not the expert here.
Alex goes, um, I, I just also just wanted to have a little footnote. I don't know that this is important at all. But when we built, uh, the room that, um, Dennis was explaining, we didn't do the buffer, we never, there was a, a problem in the communication because we never got that information. We got the information that we needed to plant some bushes around the room and that was all we got. And so there was, there's nothing in our file. There's not, there's. So I, I really feel like that was news to me. We never got that information. So something happened. I don't, I don't know what.
So you don't have a copy of the original wetlands permit for that prior project? Cause that's where I found it. I mean, obviously this was completed prior to my becoming employed with the town of Newcastle.
No, we never, we never got it. The last thing I got was a list of items that we needed to do. And I remember that that list had the bushes and that was like all it had on, on the list. And then nothing happened. And I remember that that list had the bushes, and that was like all it had on, on the list, and then nothing happened. So I, I don't know what happened. I don't, I don't know. Anyway, that might not be important, but.
So what's, what's not clear to me, Dennis, is because the applicants are, are reluctant to do what you suggest. I don't see what you suggest anywhere on a drawing, so I'm having trouble really understanding, you know, the scope of it and where it goes and, and, you know, how it's supposed to fulfill that function.
Hey, I actually would like to strike what Dennis, Dennis's comments were, and I would like to start thanking Dennis for his review. And I also would like to respect the property owners that they feel that the mitigation plan is just too intensive and is going to take some of the yard area, and they strongly disagree with it. But I would like to show you what we put on the table and also how the plan was revised due to Dennis's comments. And you'll be the judge, judges, and you decide whether or not this is too much, or, and you can give maybe some discount or, or, you know, some understanding to doing less plantings. So here's the
Excuse, excuse me, excuse me. I don't, I don't see that. Do you have that documentation that you're about to present? Excuse me. Has that been, has that been reviewed by the town yet, by Dennis yet, or has he seen it for the first time?
Yes, so this is what I'm showing right now, and I hope you can see the image. This is the plan which was submitted and based at Dennis offers, Dennis offers, offered his comments. So what it, here you have the existing brook area, the regulated area, and also you have the buffer. And here are the two proposed rain gardens. And from my understanding and, and the way I, I look at the rain gardens, they're actually very beneficial because not only they capture the stormwater, but also they infiltrate the stormwater and provide viable filtration, especially when they are located within the lawn area, they capture all the excess nutrients and then overflow to the brook with higher quality water. But if this is not acceptable, that's fine. And we're actually, I will show you the next plan, the revised plan, which removes those two rain gardens. Besides the rain gardens, we're offered herbaceous plants along the edges. We also wanted to maintain some sorts of opening, which is less than twenty feet, because the owner would like to have the access to the brook. She loves the brook. She would like to see it. She would like to be able to step it all the way to the edges. And also, she would like to have the view from the house of the brook. So we left this little access for her to keep enjoying the flowing water. In between, we have native shrubs packed along the edges that are spaced five feet apart. And let's go now to the revised plan, and I will go to to Dennis's comments. Okay, so here's the revised plan, and here are the changes. So as you see, plants were added across the stream because of Dennis's comment. And I'm not very comfortable with it because, as the owner mentioned, this is actually all naturally vegetated. There are some invasive species in the mix, and as Dennis mentioned, this is all due to deer browsing, not because the area was disturbed or has been disturbed by the owners. They actually have been maintained the entire other side, and you don't see the whole map, but the property actually runs out very far, and the entire side of the brook is maintained naturally, and there are no disturbance there whatsoever. And also, you can see this edge of the lawn. This is the existing edge of the lawn. And the entire property over here, which is also not included in this map, it's all maintained in natural state. So I don't know how many properties you have, which defaults, I would say, half of the property and give it to conservation and wildlife. But I think the property owners deserve credit for it. And as you see, the lawn is really maintained to a very minimum. Here's the driveway, here's the, the house. So there's a very limited lawn area. So we added plants across the brook. We also added a birdhouse because Dennis suggested that maybe some sorts of structures which supposedly is support wildlife would be great. Also, I added a bee house, a bee hotel that are very popular in areas where you plant for pollinators. And all the herbaceous material is a pollinator magnet. So it is good to have something for mason bees, which are going to be visiting this area to lay their eggs and have a little structure to be there. I'm not in big favor of man-made structures because, as I said, this this back area is all given to conservation, and there are plenty of nesting sites and hiding places and so on and so forth. And I don't feel that this property is in need of man-made structures for the wildlife. But we did add those two features, and also we added more shrubs here. The reason why I chose to add additional shrubs here is because behind it, it's more of a wetland area. So the wetland actually extends all the way uphill. So those plants will provide more protection to the wetlands. However, they are going to be planted within the area, which is already vegetated. Dennis asked for a demarcation feature, so those little boulders, which hopefully are not going to be huge boulders, and they're not going to be aesthetically unpleasing. But there's a lot of stones along the brook, which could be harvested and placed around the areas over here as requested. Of the property owners, I'm not liking it.
We, we should not move any of those rocks. They've been there for like at least a hundred years, and the wildlife is, we have so many animals here. We have
Deer?
I mean, we, we, the wildlife is unbelievable, and they live in those rocks, and I, I, I think messing with that is, is, is really a tragedy, and we're, we're just not going to do that.
So just talking about the comments, and Dennis asked for additional planted areas. And the additional planted area requested was eight hundred fifty, actually, eight hundred twenty-eight square feet. We added eight hundred fifty square feet, so it's a little bit more than, than requested. So we are now in compliance with Dennis's calculations of how much of an area is supposed to be planted. Also, here is the, the bee house, how it's going to look like, or bee hotel, and here's a, a natural looking birdhouse, I think, natural material to be used are safer for the than man-made material or men process material.
Okay, so in, in reading my language, and I, I appreciate, obviously, this will consider, I guess I would call it a alternative to what was originally submitted. And obviously, the alternative was developed relatively quickly and kind of looked at my bullet points, and above my bullet points, I did say in consideration of the above factors, clarification is required on the following. So some of what you have shown on the plan, I believe there was a follow-up explanation, some of which is justification for why this particular element may not be right for this particular site. For example, consideration of the adding the wildlife designs in, into the plan. And that, you know, is, is open for discussion, and based on the existing environment, I think that's acceptable. As far as though, and I'll just give you an example on the opposite end of the spectrum, having a discussion as to whether boulders are aesthetically pleasing or not within, you know, sort of like a rockline stream area, when there's, you know, let's admit, there's concern over that an applicant wants to have an open area, that they want to view the stream. Adjacent to that open area, you want to plant herbaceous cover. Landscapers in Newcastle have a lot of work, a lot of properties, a lot of stuff to do in a day. And if that were accidentally mowed, that, that technically, you know, would not, and mowed regularly, it really wouldn't serve as mitigation anymore. And in consideration of the preference of the applicant, I wouldn't exactly see it being of a concern moving forward. So, so some of these are tied to not necessarily improving the function, but just maintaining what was, what was required. So I, I have no issue working with this, but obviously, this was an understandably turned around quickly and addressed in terms of marching orders for bullet points, and that really wasn't the intention, and I apologize if that was miscommunicated. I, I'm happy to work with the applicant moving forward. I do recall the conversation about rain gardens, and I supported them. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear in terms of, I don't consider them to be wetland mitigation, but I still would obviously support their, their installation. So again, you know, as I kind of tried to say to the prior applicant, it's, it's, it's difficult, I know, because people don't think in terms of, you know, we just want to, you know, check a box or satisfy A equals B, and sometimes, you know, each site, each property, each wetland system feature, you know, you, you take into consideration those things. So and then, you know, I admit, maybe it was a miscommunication, but I still need to, from a regulatory perspective, take into consideration a prior permit that was issued, and not all the conditions were fulfilled.
Dennis, Dennis, can I just, because I, I kind of feel like we're we're dancing around a, a solution here, and I don't know what that solution is, but do I understand, because I, I really don't know where we are in this conversation. Do I understand that that, that the plan that we're looking at now, which the consultant has explained, I think, very completely and, and very well, is this a plan that, that you have? I, I don't understand. Have you already reviewed this plan? And are your comments related to this plan?
No.
Are you seeing this plan for the first time?
I'm seeing it maybe for the second time. I think I opened the email today and then had to move on to other things, to be fair, but this is the first time I'm sort of looking at it and having it explained to me, yes.
Okay, so I don't think that this is necessarily, at this point, productive, for me, anyway, productive for the planning board. I think that what we need is a staff review. Dennis, I think you, you deserve the time and to actually look at this and to to work with the applicant so that the points of agreement and the points of disagreement, if there are any, and hopefully there won't be, are really fairly well understood, so that the planning board has some basis for understanding what its responsibilities are here.
And I guess in the end, seems to be that this is a combined situation now. I, I trust at this point, the applicant has received a copy of the old, the former wetland permit. If not, please, please grab it. But my understanding is we have to work with that permit, which apparently has not been fully complied with, for whatever reason. And and this new, this new permit. So as I understood it, again, I was very confused, as, as was Tom and perhaps other board members, where we were on this. Basically, this alternative is, was drawn up in response to Dennis's comments, but certainly is not supported by the applicant. And what we really need to do is see exactly why, you know, we heard why verbally, but more importantly, let's, let's, let's get this resolved so that we incorporate these two areas. And, you know, we, I'm sure we can work out some sort of solution and have this resolved. Are there any other issues here? We're, we're talking about vegetation and, and mitigation. Are there any other issues that we have on this application? Sabrina, Dennis, Jennifer, is there anything else here that we need to be concerned with? Bob, do you have anything? I didn't see a comment from you, so I presume that from the engineering standpoint, the ball is fine.
That is correct. That is correct, Chairman.
Okay, are there any
I think the issue that you look at talking about is the biggest, is, is the only issue, really.
Okay.
What, what's the only issue?
The, the one that you all have been talking about regarding the
Yeah, but I, I don't understand. I guess I have a fundamental understanding, misunderstanding. This, this, this whole piece of property right now is kind of, it's hard to build anything if we were to follow the, you know, the, the regulations. And so usually, when we do something where we're in a wetland, not, not, or a wetland buffer, we don't like to build anything. Now, something has been built here, and it's grandfathered, so there's what's old is old, and it's there, but what, what's the hardship? You know, for, why does this have to be built, period? I mean, it's, I noticed the, the applicant indicated that it would would increase the value of the house, but that's not a hardship me, so I'm confused. Why is this coming to us?
That sounds like a legal question to me.
Well.
No, I think Yeah, no, Dick hit the, Dick recited the standard in your code. The, the board in reviewing wetland permits has to, you know, the applicant is, is charged with the responsibility of demonstrating that the proposed activity is not going to damage the health and welfare of the community by, by developing within the wetland buffer. And the applicant otherwise has to demonstrate why they would suffer undue hardship if the permit was not issued. So that, that, those are the, that's the standard in your code. So that's really a question for the applicant. That's the applicant's burden to meet. That is in section one thirty-seven dash six of, of the wetlands chapter.
So Jennifer, the operative conjunction here is the and. They would have to demonstrate that there was hardship if they weren't allowed to build this. Is that one of the fundamental conditions? They would have to demonstrate that they'd be suffering hardship?
If the board were to determine that the proposed activity is adverse to the health, safety, and welfare of, of Newcastle, and would, would, let's say, I will, I'll read the language directly. The applicant has the burden of demonstrating that the proposed activity is not adverse to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Newcastle or its neighboring communities, and that it will not degrade the environment or be inconsistent with the purpose of the wetlands chapter. In the alternative, the applicant has to demonstrate that they would otherwise suffer an undue hardship if the permit is not issued. So if it's determined that there's going to be a degradation of the environment as a result of this application, and it's inconsistent with the purposes of the wetlands chapter, if the applicant can otherwise demonstrate that they will suffer undue hardship if the permit is not issued, then there's an opportunity there to overcome the environmental degradation, if the applicant can suffer undue, if the applicant can demonstrate undue hardship.
So if the applicant wants to avoid going to the second case, which is the hardship case, the applicant would need to satisfy the town that their proposal doesn't, you know, violate that, the, the first case, and
Right.
mitigation and all those other things you're talking about now are fundamental to, for approval from us.
Right. It has to be consistent with the purposes of the wetland chapter and, and not be, you know, not, not degrade the environment.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
But that's helpful. I mean, the, the issue at hand is the issue at hand.
Yes.
Which is, which is, which is really going to be the scope and nature of the mitigation that the applicant is offering in connection with the permit. So I, I, you know, I, I think it's nice, it's good to know what the, the thresholds are. But I think frankly, I mean, we sort of jumped ahead as we often do with these permits, assuming people are offering mitigation to offset the impacts. And it's up to us to judge whether or not those mitigations are sufficient, correct, you know, et cetera. So I think that's where we are at this point.
Plan? Can we look at the first plan? Alex's first plan?
Yep. One second.
Because that was the plan that we thought was okay.
Well.
I don't know what you mean, "we thought was okay." That's unclear to me.
Yeah, I, I don't remember saying that it was okay.
Yeah.
They're like, okay, when we met with Dennis at the site, when he, when we walked it.
Okay, so we can.
It was informal, and then he comes back with this memorandum with all these other issues that was never brought up. And also Alex has spoken with Dennis at, at length, I believe.
Okay, so.
We're kind of shocked.
That's, that's fine. Um, as, maybe it's not fine, I don't know. I, you know, it's not us for Dennis, Dennis works, uh, I have complete confidence in Dennis, first of all. But that, that's sort of neither here nor there. We are going to work with the applicant based on an application that we see, which is complete and which has been, uh, reviewed by town staff. And I don't think that we have that yet because the, the drawing, which was presented as, uh, tonight, I did, Dennis, I guess, just saw it today or yesterday. We need to have a full review of all this. And you, it would serve you well to actually sit down with Dennis over drawings and have a real conversation about, you know, how we can come together on this. And bring, bring to the table, you know, a, a, a set of drawings which represent as close as you could come, uh, to, uh, satisfying the town and the areas that you don't want to, uh, the, the things you don't want to do, like I'm not going to move a boulder, then that's fine. Let us know you're not going to move a boulder. But right now, there's just, there's nothing for us to hold on to right now. So I have, I have, I do have one question about site plan. Could, could you put, could somebody put a site plan up again for a second? And Bob Cioli, this is something I, I think I need to ask of you, um, once we see it. You notice, again, I don't think that the, that this site plan has revised topography, and maybe it doesn't have revised topography because the intent is not to revise the topography. If you look at the enclosure for the, if you look at the cross sections through the, uh, can we get the plan up? If you look at the cross sections through the building, uh, it looks like this enclosure is essentially a, a post and beam pole structure, right? Um, which means that there won't need to be, uh, continuous footings up and down slope, which is good. Uh, and the cross section, you can also see that the, that the pool structure. Can somebody please put the plan up?
Yeah, to your, to your point, Tom, I did look at the plans. And if you look at their reports that they submit for cut and fill, it was only like five yards. So I believe the way they're going to build this house is into the grade of the existing grade itself. I believe there wasn't much need to show any actual regrading of the property, correct? If I'm wrong, but I believe that's how I constructed, I looked at it.
Right, well, the way I see it, they're going to get some equipment up there and create a pad or, you know, the, the earth pad. And then they're going to dig a hole to put the pool in. And if you look at the cross sections, I'm sure you have, the pool is surrounded by retaining walls of some kind. And then.
No, the, the pool is sitting on the pad and the pool is self-sustaining.
I'm sorry, I, I, we, we could stop this right now and ask you guys to come back. Or we could put up a plan so that we can review the plan. We can have a conversation.
Can we put that up, please, again? We had that up before.
Who's doing that? Should I share a screen? We never had it up, okay.
There is a drawing, what's the drawing number?
Everybody has the ability to share their screen, so they should be able to.
Yeah, it was appendix B in the submission. And it was up before.
Are you doing the site plan? The planting plan or the construction plan?
That was the schedule that we looked at last time, I think.
Mary, are you sharing or should I share the front of ground?
Thank you, that would help. Thank you, if you have, that would be great.
Okay, sure.
There it is, thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, it, it, they're going to have to get some equipment up there in order to sort of flatten the earth there in order to. And then, if you look at the cross section of the structure, there is, uh, looks like retaining walls for the pool itself. And then surrounding the pool, uh, there are a series of posts on footings. So it's sort of a post and beam sort of building, which is built around the pool. And that seems to me that that suggests that there will be, because it's so, sort of essentially like a pole barn, there'll be relatively little disruption to the site in order to build such a thing. Is that, is that correct? Bob?
Uh, that's the impression I got when I looked at it too, Tom. I felt the grading was going to be limited to the final grading. Uh, because they're building it pretty much into the natural terrain of the topography that exists.
Okay, so no worries there because one of the things we'd be concerned about is changing the topography in relation to the brook and the wetlands and what that might, you know, what that might cause to happen. So, uh, if, if, if I'm right and if we, you and I are right about that, then I, I don't have any concerns.
Yes, I agree with your assessment, uh, Tom.
Okay.
So for, uh, uh, clarification, the last wetland permit that was in connection with the construction of the other wing, which I believe is at, uh, what, the north end? And.
No, it's the south end. The one, the one that's connected to this, um, the present addition, the proposed addition.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm, I'm sorry. So where was the, so obviously we're inside the, well, I know your, your consultant speaks in terms of 50-foot, um, setback, but it's really, uh, at least 100, maybe it's even 150 in this area. But what, where was the area Dennis or applicant, uh, that was, um, supposed to be, um, uh, mitigated with the last permit? Can someone show that to us on?
It's supposed to be five feet along the, the stretch of the stream.
The entire stretch of the stream.
The one side of the stream, I, I understand, and we don't have the entire map. And I, I believe that it asks about the entire stretch on one side. Now, the area above the planting here, which we can't see on this map, is all natural. So I can imagine how you can plant this. Um, so this is basically the lawn area here, which you can see. Um, but again, the square footage was, I guess, calculated from the entire stretch of the stream. And that's why we'll have 200 plus square feet of, uh, planting requested.
So what we're looking at then with this planting plan is really in response to that permit?
No, we're not mitigating for the encroachments, which, uh, with the, um, uh, with the new screen porch and, uh, with the new terrace, so the entire square foot of those two, plus the previous, um, approval, which requested 200 plus. I don't have the exact number. Um, I can find it for you, it's a deck, so, so this is all combined, uh, which is over a thousand square feet.
Okay, okay, got it, got it. So Dennis, do you agree with that? That the, what we're looking at spatially is the, the area that would be, uh, sufficient in terms of satisfying the areas that we would, we would normally want to look at in terms of mitigation? Now, we can talk about how that's going to be mitigated, that, that we can, you guys have to work out. But is that, I, I'm just trying to get it fixed on this because I've been so confused here with this conversation. Uh, is, is that your understanding and are, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, I was looking for a, you know, one-to-one in terms of, you know, meeting, you know, the numerics of square footage. And obviously the palette would be, you know, the area adjacent to the stream, assuming that could be satisfied both for, uh, visual landscape or visual clearance for the owner, as well as, you know, what the plantings would have to be along, along the edges of the street.
Okay, and, and the rain garden, you don't really consider to be mitigation, but you certainly like the idea, the concept, and, and that would also help us, I guess, right? In, in terms of the overall, again, with tonight's, tonight's theme of, of just an overall, um, system that, uh, offsets some of the impacts that we're going to see with this construction.
Right, and again, some of my confusion could have been, I know prior applicants for pools or whatnot, sometimes propose rain gardens as part of stormwater treatment. So I, you know, I, I'm, if I answered incorrectly, I apologize. I probably had that context in, in head when, as I said, could we propose this? Meaning, is it okay to put a rain garden in the wetlands buffer? And I wasn't going to have a problem with that. But no, I'm not going to take it to the next level and be able to count it as mitigation.
Right, okay. So, so let's just, that, that's, that's, uh, it's, it's good explanation. So let's just, you know, put that, uh, behind us and, and move forward and come up with something that, that, um, you have a chance to review and, and get into a, a working relationship with the applicant so that we can resolve this. I, if, if, that's my suggestion. Uh, I have a, uh, one other piece of information I think is important is we don't have a record of the, uh, houses, the homes that might, uh, abut this property, where the location of those buildings are. And, uh, for, uh, I don't know whether it makes a difference or not. Maybe they're so far away, maybe there's so much vegetation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But we, the, the request is actually to build within a, a setback. And that raises some questions about whether there are going to be impacts to the neighbors. So if we could have a map that would, or, or a, uh, you know, Google, uh, uh, photograph, uh, aerial photograph from Google Earth.
Yeah.
Dimensions, that would be very helpful next time.
We actually have a map, Lab C, I think, does that. Uh, I think we have, uh.
Do we? I didn't see that.
Yeah.
It is part of the application, the site, develop a plan packet, page four, 4G shows the, they were homes. And I photographed of all of them.
Okay, forgive me, I didn't see that.
And 4I does the same also, yes, yep. So I think we have that information here. Uh, topo is another issue. I, I, what I would do is encourage the applicant to, to, um, have your consultant work with, with Dennis. I think we have the area more or less fairly well understood. Uh, we understand your objection to working on the other side of the brook. Let's see if we can stay on the one side that you want to stay on, if we can. I would encourage you to keep the rain gardens as something that we can point toward also to help us, even though it strictly does not give you, uh, mitigation, uh, points, if you will, uh, for the wetland permit, it still will help us overall with the application, uh, to get you to the point that, uh, you want to get to. So I, I think we have a little bit of work to do, but I don't think it's all that much work, frankly. If we just, uh, you know, take the time and get that conversation going, uh, offline with staff. And, uh, we have ample documentation here in terms of your application. It just seems to me that we have to, um, uh, make sure that we are incorporating the prior permit with the new permit. And then the other issue for us is, um, I don't know if the applicant has a preference, if you want to go to the zoning board now, um, and, and seek an approval and, and then come back here, or we can try to move, I don't know what your timing is. We can try to move forward here with the next time we get together and see where we are. And, um, uh, we can always issue at some point a conditional approval whereby you need to have the variance approved by the ZBA. So it's just a matter of timing. Uh, we meet more often than they do. Um, uh, they only meet once a month. It's sometimes a little bit tougher to get on their schedule. Um, so I, I leave that to you in terms of coordinating, again, with staff. Uh, and again, staff is a, is a great resource to, uh, to help you, uh, schedule and also resolve some of these issues on the mitigation.
I, I'm just confused about one thing, and that is, so am I understanding correctly that initial plan that Alex created is not good enough? I'm, I'm just still confused about that.
Well, we have comments here that, um, we're not quite sure if it is good enough at this point because we're not quite sure it does incorporate both permits at this point. I don't think that that was, uh, frankly, mentioned by your consultant. I think that was something that Dennis brought up when he discovered that, uh, there had been a prior permit. We heard from your.
No, 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 it's part of the application. It is right in the application and the statement for the wetlands.
Yep.
I'll leave it at that.
Excuse me?
To be fair, I will, I will reevaluate the numerics in terms of the square footage and the acreage. But to quickly answer Ms. Reitman, I had a conceptual with numbers and locations, but I just wanted to Chairman's point, some clarifications on just various elements of the, of, of the planet. So I, I'm not, I don't think I, I'm rejecting it. I just, you know, I had clarifications on some items. Uh, I, you know, your money has been well spent to this point, if that's a concern.
No, no, that wasn't my concern. My concern is just I was confused because Alex and Mary and I had made sure that the numbers for the first plan took into account both.
Yes.
Both, well, all the numbers.
Oh, yes, all the num, both, both areas.
Yeah.
We did.
Yes, I'll reevaluate to, to your credit. Yes, I will, I will, I promise.
Yep. And again, it will be up to the board to just, to determine, based on Dennis's recommendation, if a one-to-one is the appropriate number, two-to-one is what we should have, uh, given the nature of, uh, the impacts, et cetera. Or again, the nature of the minimal impacts, if that's, uh, what we determine is really in place here.
So, Bob, with respect to.
Sorry, Tom, I just want to make one quick procedural point on something the chairman brought up, um, just a second ago. Um, and that is the, the zoning board of appeals process. If the applicant does opt to go to the zoning board of appeals, um, prior to the final action by this board, and if the planning board deems that's appropriate, then this board would have to, uh, make a motion to refer the applicant to the zoning board. Um, that wouldn't be just a unilateral option by the applicant or staff. That would have to be a determination by the planning board, which can happen at your next meeting if everyone agrees that that's the right of timing and approach.
Uh, thank you, uh, Jennifer. That's actually one of the questions I was going to ask and the observations I was going to make is that I, uh, recently went through the ZBA for something that I was doing on my property and plan to do, still plan to do. And so the applicant is aware of this, and I think the planning board really also needs to remember that, uh, as Bob Kirkwood just said, they only meet once a month. And it's hard to get on their calendar. And when you do get on your, their calendar, you have to, I think you have to get on two weeks before their meeting date. Uh, then if, if you get on their calendar for that, um, then they will hear you. Uh, and then it will take another month, four weeks before they actually, uh, uh, either formally approve or disapprove your application. And then it gets sent to the building department for them to act. So the, I would encourage you to get that process going. And I would encourage the planning board to facilitate that process getting going, if we can. And if it's just a matter of a, uh, the, the sort of discrete question of building in the setback that they are asking our opinion on, uh, is it possible for us to address that question now so that we can go ahead and refer them to the ZBA with our feelings that the, uh, setback, uh, in, in incursion is not a problem for us?
I think, I, I agree with the setbacks, you know, Tom, that I think the contours are such that, that, uh, uh, that property line, which has not, not the normal setbacks, is up against a hill. So, uh, it, I don't think it's gonna, that's going to be a big problem. So if that's the sum and substance of what the, uh, the zoning board of appeals would do, I, I would encourage, you know, getting, moving along with that. That's, you know, that's, uh, uh, like, like you said. So I, I don't think it's an issue, uh, other than it doesn't violate the paper numbers that we have. It does violate the paper numbers.
So we would, we would anticipate that, uh, that we will be able to resolve the mitigation issues, but the, the, the general, um, um, application is one that we are confident will be resolved and approved. So we can, uh, is, is that sufficient, Jennifer, for us to then put together a memo, uh, referring this to the ZBA? At this time?
Really, the only thing that would be required is a, um, uh, is, is a motion to refer them procedurally. Um, um, yeah, I mean, the, the zoning board is going to be looking at it, of, of course, in accordance with their statutory five factors, one of which is whether there's a detriment to the, to the neighborhood or community as a result of the application. So, um, you know, typically I would encourage the application to get a little bit further along so that the planning board is kind of a little bit more settled with, with the plan, um, before referring. But if it's going to help to move the process along and everyone's going into it, you know, eyes wide open, um, it is a procedural option that is available to.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Can I ask you about the premise though that Bob, uh, put out there, which was, I think it was that, uh, the assumption that we would be sending it to the zoning board because we had the confidence that we were going to approve all the things that we're responsible for. Uh, are those two things linked? I mean, is, is, are we committed therefore to approve the application if we just say, go to the ZBA and say for the setback, we're okay, but we still, we still, uh, with, we still hold our authority on the other things?
You do still hold your authority on the other things. Right. Just because it, just because the zoning board grants the setback variance does not commit you to making a decision one way or another, doesn't commit you to approving the project.
For the wetland permit.
They'll hold your independent wetland permit jurisdiction.
Right. Okay.
So, uh, one, one final thing, um, I really, uh, first of all, I understand the box that the site, uh, put the applicant in with respect to all the things that are going on there. Geometrically and with the environment, so on, so forth, and the fact that they are grandfathered in and into the, the setback. And I think it's unfair, personally, I think it's unfair that somebody who just happened to be in a house that was built before the rules were made, that they should therefore be somehow penalized and not be able to, you know, enjoy the, the, their property. So on that basis alone, it seems to me that opens the door for our saying, okay, to the, to the, uh, to the, uh, to the ZBA. Uh, with regard to the rest of it, this is really a, a site that sounds like it's just got a lot going on. And the applicant really understands it very well, has lived there for a long time, has things that they attach great significance to. And I wonder if this doesn't warrant a site visit for us to walk the property with the applicant to sort of learn more about the conditions there. And on site here, there, you know, there are concerns about what we may be asking.
Well, I think, uh, I think a site visit would be appropriate. If, if the board wants to do it, uh, I think that would be fine.
Um, we can do them now. You know, we don't have to be even six feet apart.
We have had all her shots.
This temper too.
Yeah.
So, um, I, I think that makes sense. And, uh, the, the only issue I'd say is as, as much time as I am sympathetic to what, what you laid out in terms of, uh, they've been there a long time and they know the property, uh, that really is not part of the standard that we, we look at in terms of the statute on the wetland permit. So I think it's something keeping back in mind. I think we, despite what people think, we are a sympathetic group of people who really do like to, uh, work with our neighbors and community members. So I think a site visit would be good. I think we should, uh, if there's a motion, we should refer this matter to the ZBA so that the applicant is free to move forward, uh, on that side. And, uh, and then schedule this for, and if, well, I mean, I, it seems to me we're, we're just, at this point, we're, we're looking at measurements and degrees and the types of mitigation in terms of spacing on planting plans and what things to be planted. So it seems to me that's pretty straightforward. I know we have to go to a public hearing on this, so perhaps we also schedule this for a public as well as referring it on to the ZBA.
I, I, I don't think we're quite ready for that, in my opinion. I mean,
Okay.
I still am hung up on doing building on wet, wetland set, you know, setbacks. So,
Mm-hmm.
I know they came after the construction of the house. That's for sure. And, uh, we want to be sensitive to that, but it, uh, I, you know, typically, you know, we, we try and push back hard on this and it's, uh, it's not just a simple one for one kind of, uh, uh, you know, we'll do one for one. Like we, this is is not something that we want to do over and over again throughout town.
Right. So this, by the way, does this stream flow into the Croton? Is this part of the watershed?
Yes.
Okay.
So Bob, I, I suggest we not go to public yet because I'm, uh, I just think that there's a pretty big gap to, um, to
Okay.
close between, um, you know, the, our environmental coordinator and, and the applicant in terms of, you know, what to do and why.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with Tom and I, you know, I think that I also agree with Sabrina's comments earlier that, you know, that there is a, a lot of useful information in this, and that's why we have more questions than we might not, you know, have this early in the, the review, which that's good. If we get the questions answered fast, then this project moves along faster.
Okay. Well, um, is there a motion then to refer this matter to the ZBA?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So motion's carried. All, no opposed. Uh, so we'll get that out so that the applicants can start that process. And then I guess what we'll do is, um, it seems to me that, uh, the, the key on this is for the applicant, uh, and representatives to get together with Dennis and resolve the mitigation issues and then come back to us with their recommendations. And in the meantime, I think it's a good idea that we, uh, try to arrange for a, a site visit.
Do you want to arrange that as a group site visit or are you all going to do it yourselves?
I think it's, uh, uh, I'm sorry, Bob. I think it's the invitation actually of the applicant and then, you know, what they're, what they'd be willing to go through having us, five of us come separately, but really just based on how they would like to, they would like to fight us.
We don't care.
Yeah, we're fine with whatever is easier for you collectively.
So the only reason I raise that is that if it's going to be a group going at once, we need to notice it.
Correct.
You should pick a date.
Yep. So, uh, does anyone have a, a date in mind? You want to do it early on a weekday? Uh, do you want to do it on a weekend?
Weekend usually. Not, hey, I'm retired. It's okay.
I was gonna say. It's all the weekend for you, Dick.
The same morning.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do it Saturday mornings.
Yeah.
Okay.
They're from nine until like 11. We have a, a commitment, but.
Anytime after that.
Yeah, anytime after that or, you know.
Yeah, afterwards it'll be a little, it'll be nicer then. So my brain won't be overfogged.
You're saying this Saturday?
Yeah, we could do it this Saturday.
It's after 11.
After 11.
All right.
Okay.
11:30?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right.
So that's 5:22 at 11:30.
Is that enough to, to notice this? Sabrina, does it matter?
Yes, yes, we have to notice it.
I, we don't need to publish it in the paper. We just need to post it online.
Okay.
Uh, so, um, since I have joined the board, uh, a little bit more than a year ago, we have not actually done this yet because of, uh, the pandemic. And so just to be clear, um, I, I, I'm not able to commit at the moment to that time. I'm not asking to change it at all. Um, but, but I just want to make sure that is okay.
Sure. I mean, if, if the applicant and, and if you can get there, uh, perhaps at another time that you can, you know, um, work out with the applicant, that would be fine too.
Okay. Well, we'll do, excuse me, I, I will try to make it for the, for that Saturday time. I'm just not at this moment able to commit to that.
Right.
I, I just didn't know that what our, what our process is because I haven't done it yet.
Yep. Okay. Very good. So, um, we'll get the memo out to refer this to the ZBA. Uh, we'll schedule this for, uh, what, another, uh, informal hearing then? Once you, what should we look at Sabrina and Felicia?
I think it's a, it's really contingent upon Dennis and the applicant, app, the applicant submitting a plan that Dennis is comfortable with, that he can put before your board.
I think, why don't we, uh, let's see, in June, we're gonna meet on the first and the 16th, the Wednesday, right? Because of tax day on the 15th?
Correct.
Um.
You don't have to commit to a date if that, if it's informal. It's not a public hearing or a continuation.
Right. Um, well, I think a, a good target probably will be the 16th. Uh, you don't want to go later than that because then we don't meet again until September. So that would be, uh, I think that would be the target. If you can get it in sooner, we have an opening on the slot for, uh, in the agenda for the first, that would be fine. So I think Sabrina's recommendation is good. We'll play it by ear and see where we are in terms of, uh, the information material, uh, and, uh, the conversations and where we are. All righty?
Yep.
Works for me.
Okay.
Will you be sharing the details for the Saturday meeting?
Or Felicia will email everything to all the members.
Good. Okay.
Do with your account. Can I, please let me know.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We move on. We plod on. Uh, my next item. This is the, uh, new, uh, C, NCR 801 Cortmel Road channel stabilization on New York City DEP property at 24 and 40 Cortmel Road. This is an application for steep slope permits, stormwater management and erosion and sediment, uh, station control.
Sorry. Thank you, Bob. Uh, my name is Kevin Fitzpatrick. I'm the director of the East of Hudson Watershed Corporation. This was a, uh, project that was brought to our attention by, uh, staff at the town, uh, in, in conversations with the New York City DEP. The project, um, just to, for those that may not be familiar with who we are, the East Hudson Watershade Corporation is addressing a phosphorus reduction requirement which is in place through the New York State D E C stormwater permit for all municipalities within east of Hudson. Each municipality that we represent had a phosphorus reduction number that had to, has to be met over the 10-year period of the, the permit. Uh, this project in particular, uh, has the chance to reduce just shy of 23 kilograms of phosphorus, which, uh, is pretty close to half of the requirement that the town of Newcastle, uh, was given through the process. Um, as I, as I said, the project came into us, uh, through, um, Sabrina's office and, and Bob's always office as, as long, uh, along with the DPW and the DEP. There are two heavily eroded channels which are, uh, currently discharging municipal stormwater from Cortmel Road down through DEP property and into the Kisco River. Uh, these channels have, uh, actually passed the definition of a channel, I think, and are closer to a chasm. Uh, at this point, they're, uh, fairly dangerous and anybody who's gotten a chance to walk past them can, you know, it's, they're hard to mess. Um, but we've got a great, great opportunity here to, to a stormwater retrofit that is fully funded by the East Hudson Watershade Corporation. And, um, we're going to look to stabilize those channels. We will install some water quality treatment, uh, filtration devices within the roadway. Um, and, and within the catch bases on site, we expect to be investing close to, uh, $750,000 over the course of the whole project into, uh, into the neighborhood there as we look to, uh, reduce the phosphorus in the, in the area and address the, the stormwater runoff into Kisco River. Um, this is, uh, it's a hard shot to really get a, get located, but this is Cortmel Road running north to south with, uh, with one channel discharge coming towards the, the bottom end of the picture and the second at the end of the cul-de-sac, both of which discharge right into the Kisco River. Uh, these are some of the photographs I got taken and were distributed to you folks as part of our application to address it. Uh, this is as close as I was willing to get to the channel. Um, it's, it's a pretty, uh, that one in particular was, was in rough shape. So it was, uh, it qualifies as a great project for, for us to come in and, and help out for sure.
I think those are very steep slopes.
Yes, they are.
It's over 25%.
Yeah, that whole, uh, that whole hill is steep. That one might be a little leading forward. Uh, it's past, you know, past the, uh, right angle. Uh, you can see in the, in the fall and in the winter, we had, there were some turbidity issues. This is what triggered the, the town personnel to reach out to the corporation and say, hey, you know, what, what can we do about this project? What can we do to, to get it into the program and clean this up? Uh, the town, uh, DPW went out and made a temporary fix at one of the channels, uh, at the intersection of Noyes and Noyes Road and Cortmel Road, just to help try to slow down some of that erosion that was, um, that was happening at every rainstorm. Um, here you see the actual existing conditions of the, of the channel. Uh, this is receiving stormwater runoff from the entire residential area of Noyes Road down to Cortmel, which discharges through an existing pipe onto DEP property down to the Kisco River. There is an existing drainage easement that, that runs west to east down to the Kisco River, but water finds its own path. And, uh, the, and now that channel has, um, emerged on the, just on the other parcel and has caused quite a, um, quite a cut. Same situation that, uh, a little bit further north on Cortmel Road itself, collecting the discharge, uh, from Cortmel Road as well as, um, the subdivision of to the west. I don't quite recall the, the name of the road, but, uh, same condition where there's an existing easement on DEP property that runs down to the Kisco River. Uh, water found its way and created its own channel. This one's a little bit closer to the existing easement that's in place, but we'll look to, uh, come in at both locations, starting at the, the Cortmel and Noyes intersection. Uh, the idea here is we'll install filtration devices within the roadway, uh, including some, um, subsurface infiltration to get the water to seep back into the ground and some filtration devices to treat it before discharge into channel, uh, and which leads into the Kisco River. That'll be about a 12-foot wide, um, riprap path which will, uh, which carry the flow down to the Kisco River. And with, I believe there should be two to one slopes on either side of the, um, of the channel. Uh, from the, from the start, we've engaged with the New York City DEP and, uh, Bob's office, uh, as well as the DPW to make sure that we were checking all the needed boxes as we, as we went along uh, our, our design. Um, we feel we've gotten to a pretty good, um, point here. The DEP signed off on what we proposed. Um, and, and we think that this is going to be a good, uh, good project moving forward here. Same conditions again down at Noyes. I'm sorry, at the, at Cortmel Road at the cul-de-sac where we'll be doing a 12-foot wide riprap with one to two slopes on either side. Um, the current proposal is actually the, the DEP came back with comments since I've sent these documents to you guys, um, in, in the past few weeks. They've requested that we eliminate one of the maintenance paths on either side of the channel. So, you know, in, in this case, let's say we eliminated the north side on, on either one, leaving just one path for maintenance in the future. Um, I, I personally don't object to this. Uh, it's, I think it is enough to get down there and do whatever is necessary. And on, um, the, the positive to that is it's going to allow us to address maybe a little bit additional vegetation that we can get in once the, um, post-construction conditions take place. That gives, cause since these are very tight channels and we tried to keep our limited disturbance as tight as we could, just what we needed. Um, you know, so to, to limit any kind of tree clearing, this gives us the opportunity to at least, uh, work with Dennis and make sure that we get some type of additional vegetation in place. Uh, the DEP has asked us to do the same as well. Um, and on, on the topic, Dennis, I got a chance to speak with him, uh, as recently as last week, I believe, where we went over a couple of his comments and concerns towards the project. Uh, one in particular that comes to mind was the use of some, um, matting that can be biodegradable, that will allow more vegetation to grow in and allow for a little bit more natural setting. Uh, I think that's a perfectly valid comment and, and something that we can add to the, the, the plan going forward.
Very good. Thank you very much, Kevin. Appreciate it. Um, any comments from, uh, board members? Uh, Bob, any comments? Sabrina, any comments? Dennis, any comments?
Kevin, can I ask a question? Um, Kevin, you mentioned, uh, an existing drainage easement. That's a drainage easement to allow uh, drainage to come from Cortmel Road down to Kisco River?
Correct.
Okay. And you mentioned that the swale or whatever this is now, a chasm has, uh, sort of migrated outside of that easement area. Have there been any discussions about modifying the location of that easement to?
Yes. Yes, it has. And the, um, what the DEP is deciding on, um, as you can imagine, it's, it's a process to get the answer from them currently. But, uh, what they're deciding on is whether or not they want us to go the route of getting a land use permit for the location or just amend the existing easement. Uh, the last comment they, they gave to me, um, which was the request to remove one of the permanent pathways. Um, they felt would facilitate us to be able to, to just amend the existing easement so that it's more representative of today's conditions versus, you know, 1970s, when, whenever the, uh, pipe was originally installed.
And, and I, I think it's important to note too, Kevin, um, that the town will be responsible for maintaining this once it is completed. Um, it, it will, it will factor into our phosphorus reduction responsibilities and our contribution to the East of Hudson Water Corporation, Watershed Corporations bubble compliance. Um, the only other point that I wanted to make, um, was regarding the seeker review. The East of Hudson Watershed Corp took an uncoordinated review and called this an unlisted action and and with a negative declaration. I forwarded those documents to you this afternoon when I received them. Um the planning board per my discussions with Jen Gray should um do its own uncoordinated review regarding this action and determine whether or not you agree with the determine with the uh the type, uh the part two and three as uh provided to you today, whether or not you want any amendments to that for your own or you're going in a different direction.
Okay, I haven't had a chance to see it. I don't know if others have seen it.
You don't have to decide that today.
Right, right. I understand. Thank you. So we'll take a look at that and we'll let's uh thank you for reminding us of that important decision. Um okay, good. Uh are there any uh technical issues or concerns or questions uh on the presentation and the proposed action plan here?
I guess uh I'm a non-technical person on these matters, but um I I it's and the the photographs of Lewis Burrow and Patterson uh Carmel, uh they're very helpful to understand what the drawing shows, so thank you for that. Uh but I, it just seems like I mean, I understand that 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 the problem is caused by and then an invasion of the environment by this cul-de-sac and the collection of stormwater and all of that. Uh that's pretty clear. But it's also seems to me that the solution of uh this riprap for, I don't know, a couple hundred feet, I don't know how long it is, but the solution to use riprap just seems to me to be another incursion. It's an engineering solution, but and I'm happy to hear that that Dennis and I'm not surprised that Dennis is saying, you know, let's do something about slope, stabilize slope, get vegetation in there and all those things. Uh first stabilized soap also to help the filtration of the sediment that would otherwise get into this channel. It just seems like a, to me, like a heavy-handed solution. Is there, and I I know you're not gonna change the design based on this, but just as a point of information, would there have been another another solution which is actually just to leave the channel alone and put a a a sediment trap towards the mouth of the outfall towards the Kisco River? And then you would only have to maintain that one portion. It may have to be a big sediment trap, but that one portion of the uh of the water course uh and leave the rest of it natural and let it do what it will do because the ravines that you showed and, you know, the overhanging trees and roots and all of that, that's natural habitat. I mean, that's places where animals love to go, animals love to live and animals love to hunt. Uh so I'm just curious, is there another in engineering solution that would uh achieve the same the same effect without actually putting the riprap in and re-grading this whole this whole water course?
Sure, I think that the, to answer your question, one of the original design that I that I had asked our engineer uh to propose to the DEP called for us to pipe it all the way uh the full length of the hillside down to the Kisco River and then provide some, something along what you're what you're referring to, Tom. Uh you know, maybe not a sediment trap necessarily, but riprap slash pad, something to, you know, get a lot of the velocity dissipate. Uh but the DEP was not in favor of that um that proposal. They had concerns over um over piping it and they they pushed us towards the direction of of uh re-grading the entire channel. And then um, you know, in the design that you see in front of you today. The uh and and to to your other comment of of leaving it as is, there there is a certainly a a value to keeping the natural setting. Uh and we have to balance the our attempts to keep those natural settings with also trying to meet the New York State D E C stormwater permit requirements, which is to have some phosphorus reduction. Um and the only way to achieve that would be to stop the erosion from happening entirely to just to just catch the sediment one right before it reaches the the river wouldn't satisfy um their 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 program.
It wouldn't be as effective.
Wouldn't be as quite as effective, yeah.
So uh just uh one more question. So because of the riprap, uh the uh the sediment drops out of the water course and settles between the riprap.
Yeah, the what's gonna happen here is that tho- those banks will not uh erode anymore uh because we'll have the the riprap along center of the channel and then um structural um stabilization along the banks, which will allow the natural vegetation to grow in. Um but also the sediment from the roadways and the phosphorus nutrient loading that's coming in from the roadways and the stormwater system will be treated uh at before the channel, actually with uh within our filtration devices that we'll put in place up there. So the idea is that nothing, the the phosphorus reduction which will um will will be available to us to um is gonna be clean them almost everything up.
Okay, so uh thank you. Just one last question. Is there, is there a history of these riprap uh channels eventually? Because some sediment's gonna get in there eventually, being uh the home of uh some natural vegetation that would grow in there?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Um I I think we'll definitely see that as uh as some of that grass will grow in, it'll fill in the the voids within the riprap. Um and then and then we'll see more growth um take place in there. But it's a balance between allowing that to happen and making sure that the channel also stays clean and is not uh is not leading to sediment deposition into the river again. Uh but it there is a balance between the ma- maintaining the channel and doing what you're suggesting.
Okay, great. Thank you, Kevin.
Is this the another point that I wanted to bring up to everybody that I I shouldn't have mentioned because uh in in those photos, you see a lot, a couple of those channels. Um I I think a couple of those channels might, you might be able to see them from outer space. Uh the the white stone, that white bleached stone really jumps out, to say the least. Uh it's not our intention to utilize the that type of stone. That's gonna be that visible. We wanna try to use something that's gonna have more of a natural feel into the hillside because they're they're, while this is a fairly well-hidden space, it's not gonna have a lot of eyes on it. There still will be eyes on it and people will still be able to see the um the installation. So we wanna be, you know, respectful of the of the community and the and the residents around these um these channels.
Kevin, you I'm sorry, sorry, Robert. Kevin, you'll be using the gray stone as opposed to the white quarry stone?
Uh I think so. If that's, I mean, if you if you'd like me to stick with the white stone, then that's
No, 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 no.
Yeah, I think we'd like to get away from it.
Yeah, no, the white stone is is a hideous. Uh we always use the gray stone.
Yeah, I also think that it it's important to note that the maintenance, particularly up in the roadway of the devices that are be going to be installed. Um they do need to be maintained and part of this is uh is the East of Hudson Watershed Corporation will provide um maintenance guidelines for our DPW to um to ensure that they're maintained because if those drainage practices fail, then we're back where we started and, you know, the the armoring of the banks and everything that we're doing in the on the sides of the stream channel are also going to help clean if there is an exceedance, but you know, it's really focusing maintenance of what we're doing, how we're improving it and preventing the soil from getting into the drainage channel.
And also too for the boards and from for the board's information, now Bor and I looked at these plans from the beginning and Kevin was the very admirable about making changes. So we have looked at these plans and commented on them as mainly for the aspects of the road for Bor and DPW.
Is there um as part of this, or I can only say the comments before um would it be helpful if we had a planting plan um where we we just don't wait for the plants to regenerate, but we also help them? And it's due some, perhaps some wetland species on these banks because it seems to me that the erosion here is really, it's it's two-pronged. It's a result of water flow, but it's also the result of uh lack of vegetation which can hold and bind the this kind of soil. So would that be something that the we can see on this?
That's something that we that we can um that we can add for sure. Um I don't know this, I wouldn't use the wetland plants, uh plants, for example. I know you're you're using using that as an example, but um the the way that the structural um stabilization fabric works on the on the hillside is, you know, once it's, once it's placed there, uh a native seed mix will be applied and then the grass will come in along that because that's, this material is like a a small matrix. Right, it gets put down and and it grass is really the only thing that's gonna effectively go through there, including weeds, of sure. But um to your point, I think we can do a planting plan um to try to to assist the um the post-construction view of what's going on everywhere, you know, anywhere that it's applicable, particularly any of the construction access areas that that we put in, if we're gonna be putting in any brush
Right.
trees, uh that's that'll also be a requirement of the DEP as well.
Good. I I I think we should see that. That would be very helpful because I think it's it's both visual as well as uh uh engineering. It will help uh stabilize this area. By the way, quick question. We looked at one of these a couple of years ago over the, you know, near the burden property. Uh to my knowledge, that work's never been done. That was
Correct.
four years ago. What's what's happening there?
Uh we we had to go back to the drawing board a little bit and and just some comments that uh the Bob's office gave us and uh and we'll look to see if we can get that that one pushing forward as well.
Okay, great. Would that also help us with our uh potassium uh load?
Phosphorus, yep.
Well, that's who.
They both begin with a P.
That's, that's right, right. So porridge.
The the trees uh that were sort of hanging over, obviously you'll have to those down. Is that the uh the boundary that is drawn? I can see some crosses and I'm sorry, I'm not able to and but these, so there is a, there's a way to protect trees beyond that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, anything, the um this this dashed line here is the the limits of our disturbance that we expect. And anything that falls within probably ten, I think the DP would require us anything within ten feet of that line will need to have some form of protection um installed along it.
Yeah, so there's a good like fifteen, twenty trees, right? Those crosses are, that's what it is.
I I I think you're right. I I think once we start adding them up, that's probably gonna be the case. Many of them might not really um you know, might might be pretty fairly small saplings that aren't uh going to necessarily succeed in the in the forested area anyway. But uh whatever, a- as part of any DP installation on on their properties, we have to meet their forestry. And uh even if it's not on a plan, they'll tell us what they wanna see uh with additional protection to make sure we we meet the meet all the local and and city requirements.
So do those X's represent trees that are going to be removed?
Correct.
So I think you also need a tree permit uh with us as well. Seems to me that there are more trees here. Uh there are enough trees here that are being removed that are tree permits triggered.
Um it's it's possible. Many of them are already hanging. Well, inevitably going to be lost.
Yeah, no, I understand. I mean, that's that's fine, but uh what happens also in the tree permit is we also like to say that will help us with the planting plan because we also look for reforestation and replacement of the trees that have to be cleared.
It also depends on the size of the trees.
Right, but I'm looking at these very quickly. I see some are, you know, fourteen and, you know, whatever. I can't read them all very clearly. Some of these are kind of uh obscured by other lines. But I think we should look at that as well. It'll just help us uh memorialize the plant.
Uh to that, to that point, um I'm looking at the at the 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 new topo lines and where they join the existing topo, uh that's not how it's gonna end up, right? I mean, especially towards the the top of
Yeah, they'll they'll be softened.
Yeah, it will be softened. And in some cases, some of these are gonna be softened quite a bit. Um because it's just what's gonna happen. Either it's gonna happen in the construction or it's gonna happen soon thereafter. So I wonder if we are concerned about the trees and I think we should be. We oughta maybe have a grading plan which is more to what it's likely in gonna end up being so that we're certain we understand what the disturbance is gonna be.
But don't be discouraged. We like the plan. We like the idea of the concept and this is, this is gonna be a nice uh contribution to uh protection of the Kisco.
But it is, it is, I I'm sorry, it is interesting that like there's a sixteen inch oak uh and the symbol for a sixteen inch oak is no bigger or smaller than a symbol for a twelve inch maple, a ten inch tree. And so, I mean, the root ball for these things is, you know, quite big.
Yep.
So we need to sort of really understand that a little bit better. Um just so we know what we're dealing with.
Yep, okay. Anything else? Any other questions? Anything, Kevin? Any questions from us?
Nope.
Okay. Great. So what do what do we do procedurally and procedurally? Um on this, do we eventually have to go to a public hearing? Uh uh yes, we do. Okay.
You do, yes.
Okay. So um do you wanna come back to us with these uh some of the answers to the some of these questions and then uh set up a public and get this thing going? All right. Are are board members, uh is there a a motion to move this forward to a public hearing at this point, or you wanna see this additional information first?
I don't care. Either way, if it's, if I, if if you don't mind, if if I could work with um with with Dennis and Bob's office to to meet the the requirements as best we can and we can, we set that public hearing uh for today, that'll help us with our timeline to make sure that we, you know, we we push it forward, meet all the requirements, but uh it's also, there's uh an eligibility of funding that we could get from U S uh Army Corps of Engineers that uh that I'd like to make sure that we we try to meet that deadline as well.
What is
The uh I I'm gonna have to be out to construction, I think, in um certainly in the month of July. Um I mean, we're going bidding, going out to bid. So that means that, you know, the next available board meeting that I that if I could get on that for the public hearing and I'll press my engineer to um to make sure that we have a um a planting plan that can meet the requirements that Dennis uh speaks to us about.
Well, the next meeting would be the June first. After that is June sixteenth. Uh June first, we probably already passed the deadline for the materials that we'd have to receive, June first being.
Well, I I can, I can tell you though, i- as long as we are in a timeframe for enough notice, um given that this is a project that the town is partner to through the East of Hudson Watershed Corporation, we can um make an exception to the to the deadline as long as we have the plans and enough time to notice. So Kevin, I think it's really gonna depend on how quickly you can turn around the the landscape plan and the grading plan.
Are you suggesting Sabrina, we might be able to do the first if you get the material?
Yes.
I have no problem with that.
Felicia, is there enough um is what is the deadline that you need to notice by for the first?
Um it's the week before by the by the Monday, which I don't have a calendar in front of me right this
Uh it's the twenty fifth, I believe, right? Uh when the Mondays, yeah, twenty fifth, twenty fifth is Tuesday, twenty fourth is the Monday.
Yeah, Monday, right.
So Monday, so by Monday, yeah.
Is that, is that something that's feasible, Kevin, or no?
Uh well, it'd be feasible to me. I'd have to speak with my uh engineer of record, see how quickly he could turn that around.
Man, you sound like a regular
That probably is not enough time.
I I get, if it was, if it was up to me, I'd have it done tonight, but um unfortunately, it's out of my hands. I'll check with them. Um I I will do everything I can to make that um that deadline. I don't think that there's a lot left to meet the requirements that you guys asked about. Uh I think they they should have been preparing a landscaping plan as is anyway, in in anticipation of this. Um and, you know, softening the the grading uh as uh Tom had brought up earlier is, that's a quick fix that they can uh they can make an adjustment on.
Okay, so uh we're shooting then for a public, is that right?
Correct, yes. So we're shooting for a public and uh I guess the motion is that we will uh move this forward to a public hearing, looking to um have to see you again on June first, but if for some reason you can't make it, we'll see you then on June sixteen.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you mu- very much for your time.
Yep, is there a motion to move that forward to a public hearing?
We'll move.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All in favor?
Hi.
I am not opposed, so we're all set. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, we move now to our next item and this is a referral from the Conservation Board. This is regarding the N R I grant, the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. This is regarding the N R I grant, the York State Department of Environmental Conservation Hudson River Estuary Program, a grant application. Newcastle Natural Resources Inventory. Did I see in Ivy's notes the other day that we we received this yet, or is it just that we're applying? In the town uh electronic newsletter.
We're applying.
Okay. Alrighty, tell us about it.
So uh yes, every year, I guess uh Hudson River Estuary Program uh has various. Grant monies available and uh this year. Um there is money available to completing natural resources inventory. And I know that a number of the neighboring towns uh have already uh completed either a uh. As deemed a natural resources inventory or in the case of Newcastle, I think it was called the biodiversity index plan. But in essence, you know, what 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 we're we're looking for in applying for the funding is at this stage. Um this would be a really expanded, very glorified desktop analysis of really a compilation of. Of 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 the resources available, uh public repositories, mapping, um that type of data. Just to sort of get that, you know, comprehensive single report, you know, for the for the town uh as a whole. And it seems like, you know, we've kind of, you know, work our way towards something like this, but you know, it it kind of gets funneled down to, you know, either a. Uh a property limits or or subdivision uh type of level, but I think, you know, having having all of this. Um you know, sort of in 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 one place, you know, with respect to, you know, not just. Features of, you know, let's say if it's geology, surface waters, wetlands, um even certain types of habitats. Uh I I think it allows for, you know, not just, let's say, this board in 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 evaluating applications as to, you know, what impacts may be. Moving being on just the limits of a property, but I think considerations moving forward to expand those resources. Uh promote, you know, corridors and 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 contiguousness. Um this this really would provide opportunity to to sort of evaluate that at a at a at a more comprehensive and better level. To to see where where those opportunities are. And I think that, you know, maybe as a supplement to this. Uh if there needed to be where, you know, targeted funnel down uh ground truthing. To get, you know, more specificity on some of the resources that come through, you know, just from the mapping exercise. Uh that is 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 a potential uh that that could be, you know, done, you know, through applying for additional funding. As well as uh some of the uh work we've had to do uh which which I know, you know, Sabrina's been working on. Uh sort of the updating of the Parks and Rec Master Plan where I've, you know, kind of went through a lot of our our park areas. And, you know, have done sort of these inventory habitat characterizations, which, you know, have been able to tie some specificity to. You know, okay, so a particular area may be forested or a particular area may be mapped as wetland. But now you have, you know, at least in this case, I was able to provide some specificity to, well, what type of wetland? What are those dominant species that are growing within that wetland? Or what is this type of, you know, terrestrial forest and what those species are growing? Uh and where transition may have occurred with respect to an area of the park or based on topography. And having those offered uh in in the uh in the O F P that we requested um. From consultants that they would be able to use that if necessary in developing the N R I. So I think, you know, we're we're in a pretty good spot. To um really sort of advance this. The the hope is though is that we, you know, we do receive receive the funding. And I guess, as I mentioned, in the memo, we did get town board approval to apply, which was a requirement of the application. And the town board also was willing to commit to uh fifteen percent, I believe, of the matching funds. And I estimated in that forty to forty-five K range to complete. And I know we received, today was the deadline, we did receive three uh proposals. Um in response to the R F P, and I only had a chance to open the one. And uh one of them actually was uh just about at that low end of of forty, so I was. At least pleased that I was uh within the window, at least for for one. I haven't looked at the other two, so I I can't really.
So from us, um you would like uh uh support, right? Of course. Uh I guess more support we can get to send to the um the grants folks, uh the better.
Yes, and that that is a uh one of the questions that was asked. So I'm I'm not taking on a. Uh any credit, and I would like to thank Mr. Curly for providing uh a draft, which I was able to. Just sort of, you know, very slight slight tweaks and just drop it onto sort of the proper. The memorandum letterhead and uh how, you know, the signature page would appear. To this point, I have received letters of support from uh to their credit, the uh new uh student arm. If you want to call them junior members of the Conservation Board, which I I I appreciated, as well as um. Uh the director at uh uh T P N, um when I have, I volunteer and have relationship with, and she was kind enough to. To her bedroom as well.
Great, um good. I mean, I I'd reach out to as many of these groups as you can, Hudsonia and all these kinds of folks, uh Westchester Land Trust, et cetera. But um uh I I think this is, this makes great sense and. With the exception that the letter sounds more erudite than my normal uh memorable sound, uh this this looks good. Uh thank you for drafting this, guys. Uh appreciate it. Um do we want to uh? I guess we need a motion then to adopt the uh the referral that we are in in the sport. And issue the letter out to uh.
I'll I'll make the I'll make the motion with amendment. There is one missing noun. The third line from the bottom, extend that important. It should have a noun in there. And I think if you just put work, should extend that important, that important work, reading seems information resource.
That was the omission that made it sound genuine, but it was really from me. Now we've ruined it. Okay, we'll put that. That's great. Thank you.
Can I just make one other suggestion? Uh well, actually two, sorry. Um right above that line that Tom Curley just referenced. I think borders needs to get the A.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
And then on in the second line, is it?
That changes everything.
Is it um just, is it just technical assistance? That the town is applying for? Is it financial as well? And if it's a combination of different kinds of assistance, maybe just strike technical?
Yes, I agree. But now I have to rewrite the whole thing. I think that's I think that's right. If 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 Dennis agrees, I mean, why categorize it, right?
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's a little a little of both, to be fair. That is a fair comment.
Good, okay. So as amended, is there a motion to um authorize me to sign this uh amended memo? Get it out to uh as soon as possible. To the Hudson River S T R program, folks.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? If not, good, motion's carried. So thank you very much, Dennis. Thank you very much, Tom, for your involvement in this as well. Um I can stop by uh town hall tomorrow just to sign this thing when it's all amended. So let me know when it's set, Felicia, and I'll just stop by or maybe do it electronically, scan it.
I I I think it would be better if it was done electronically. We're still not back to full capacity in my office. I don't think. Office until Thursday.
Good, okay. Let's um uh let's jump ahead here because we have applicants waiting. Why don't we, I think a local law referral about the A F F H affordable housing requirements would really kind of blend better with our. Hamlet rezoning uh conversation. So rather than keeping the Wachtels and Rockledge Farm waiting any further, why don't we uh skip? Uh we'll go back to the local law referral and we'll take the Rockledge Farm three forty-eight Whipplewell Road. This is an application for a special use permit at three forty-eight Whipplewell Road for Rockledge Farm. To allow the former Twin Oaks Swim and Tennis Club to re be repurposed as an organic farm. This is a referral from the town board. Sorry to keep you folks waiting. Um you could probably watch your plants grow as you listen to us, but. So it goes.
And all right.
Good evening, uh Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. I'm Jerry Barrett. I'm the planner, landscape architect for the project. And I'm here with Madeline Wachtel and Bill and Annie Zabar and Leo uh from Rockledge Farm. Uh so we've been discussing this project for quite a while now, started off with informal meetings at town hall, when we still had those kind of meetings. To knock around the idea of how this can proceed. And um and we're here tonight because we think we have the the project now in a in a workable condition that I think uh is. Uh achieved by town staff and working with the town board. So we'd like to share that with you tonight. Um so you can uh provide your input as well. Um so. Uh Rockledge Farm is essentially the old Twin Oaks Swim and Tennis Club on Whipplewell Road. Um and that's this about thirty-four, thirty-five acre parcel right here. You can see that it's a it's a rugged parcel. It's got a high point. Uh up in the back and then it slopes down. It's essentially all wooded. You have a.
Jerry, do you want to, do you want to put your map up?
It's not up?
No.
I thought it was, sorry.
It was, but maybe it's been covered.
Now I see what I did, or rather what I didn't do. Did that come up?
Uh it's starting. It hasn't come up yet. There it is.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so um what you see on the right of the screen is the former Twin Oaks Swim and Tennis Club, that. Uh rectangle rectangular feature there, that is the old pool that has been taken out. These are the old tennis courts that have now been repurposed for farm uses. So it's about thirty-five acre site. It's a rugged site. It's a high point up in this area. It slopes all the way down. There's an intermittent water course. And the low point of the site is here where the where the overland flow leaves the site. It's principally all wooded. You have a very long access drive. It's an eighteen foot wide access drive. Two cars can pass each each other easily on the way in and out. Um and then when you get down to the central portion of the uh of the site, this is where the um. Where the hub of the swim and tennis club was. Blow it up a little bit, but whoops.
It's good.
Okay, so you had the the former pool was in this area, the former cabana clubhouse was in this area. The former kitchen snack bar is in this area. Parking was here. There was a double set of tennis courts here and three more sets of tennis courts out in this area. The property um at one point when we were working with staff early on. Um the Wachtel residence is on this side of the street. At one point, it was contemplated of merging that into the farm, but for simplicity's sake. Farm will only be at three forty-eight Whipplewell Road, which is this this area right in here. Um so with that um overview, I'll go to really go right into the 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 farm plan. And this is a master plan that we had developed for the farm plan along with the owners. Uh you can see, here's the site again. Um and as I said, this is, it's all wooded and the only area that's not wooded. Are that central area that we talked about earlier and the former tennis courts. So what we had done was we had put together a uh. Yeah, put together a kind of a legend and we just talked about, you know, some of the existing features that we went through. And those are the yellow things, you know, here's the wetland line. Uh there's a couple of fire hydrants. This is the Cat Rock Road, Wildcat Road. Um uh right of way, uh there's a water main connecting Whipplewell Road and one twenty-eight over here. And there are two two fire hydrants right here, easily accessible to the site. Um this is the access road that comes in. There is a buried water line and a buried electrical line comes all the way in. All the way into the site buried and then comes into the buildings in this area here. Um the former tennis courts in the back area, they have been um repurposed to to growing plots where they. They opened up the the tennis court, took out the granular material, put some org- organic material in, and that's where they grow the the flowers and the vegetables. Um in those areas. This is a covered hoop house, so in the winter they could still be working on some of their plantings. Um getting ready for the next season. The chicken coop area is in this area. And what you're seeing here is um. What was important when we were working with the with the town board and staff on this was to establish this two hundred and fifty foot. Setback line from all properties, and that's what this red line represents. And um all farm-related animal pens or manure, all that is ideally. Inside that, so it's at least two hundred and fifty feet from a property line, and that's what we've done. So this is the chicken pen areas in this area. These would be the, these would be the uh. The uh pastures for the for the goats and sheep. Farm animals on site include eight sheep, eight goats, two llamas. And I believe a hundred and twenty chickens. Um there's also a beekeeping area that's right in this area. There's an existing septic system on the site right here that formerly serviced the cabana with ten showers and ten toilets. Michael Campbell's working with the Health Department to obtain a reuse permit in case they ever convert that to a caretaker's. Ca- a caretaker's quarters at some future date, but Michael says it's a much less intense use, so he he sees no problem with that being repurposed. There is a former tennis administration building here, and that now is um and that building also had. Had a small bathroom in it, and there's a small septic. It's right in here. Michael's also working on that one. And that bathroom in this shed area here, this is for the workers um to use during the day as needed. The only new structure that's being built on the property is a small uh uh pole barn, if you will, for food store. For feed storage and for the animals. Um it's not going to be built, it's going to be built on on piers, on posts. So there's not a, you know, a full excavated footing. It will be installed where the former swimming pool was. It's about fifteen by thirty-five. Um in that area, not a very large building at all, and it should be easily installed with very little site disturbance other than having to. It's a level area to begin with, so other installing the 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 poles for the pole barn, it should go in very easily. Um let's see. We have gone through and we tried to provide a narrative to the board um to kind of go through uh many of the aspects of the farm and then you that. Staff and uh with staff and the town board and and that is all in there, any anywhere from the number of employees and the deliveries. And how all that works, that's all spelled out there, and Madeline's done a lot of work on that and provided a lot of in- information there. Um one of the feature, one of the things that we talked about at length was the manure and um. I've been educated and I understand that there are two types of manure. There's dry manure or cold manure, and there's wet manure. The dry manure comes from the goats and the sheep and the llamas, and essentially the workers go out and rake up. The pellet pelletized dry manure in buckets and they reuse that and they repurpose that and they use that for fertilizer for growing the crops. Then there's also wet manure, and that's involved with the chickens. And the it's collected mainly from the chicken coops. There's four coops, as you can see here, but also, you know, we're inside the animal pen. And it's usually mixed with hay, and that facilitates the cleanup of that uh of manure. It sticks to the hay and they can clean it all up. And on a weekly basis, it's all cleaned out and the hay is changed out, and that all that hay goes and it goes into. A a ten yard dumpster, which is here, which will be set on a on a flattened out gravel or concrete pad. And the idea there is that that will be picked up um once or twice a month, whatever they need it to be picked up. The it'll be one of those types of dumpster dumpsters. You've all seen them. It's got the the plastic lid on it that flops open. They load it up, they close it, and it keeps the uh keeps it from, you know, the rainwater hitting it and, you know, nutrient rated laden runoff. Going out, it'll ca- keep some of them, some of the uh, you know, keep the odors um confined. And again, it's 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 within that two hundred and fifty foot setback area. And what we've done is. Because this was a question that came up several times, how close is that manure area to any any potential neighbors? And so what we did was we showed that area and um it's quite a ways, nine hundred feet, twelve hundred feet, twelve hundred feet. Um from anywhere. It 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 will not be visible to any neighbor. Um and I think if you look at the aerial map. If you look at the aerial map, you'll see that it's it's here. It is here. It's it's entirely wooded in every direction, so I don't think there will be any. Problem with uh, you know, with 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 any odors coming from the chicken manure. So that's kind of an overview of the farm uh activity and um, you know, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Um I had a question about the animals. Um is the role of the animals then uh just to provide the manure? Or maybe are they being, will they be a crop also? will they be a crop also? Will there be butchering on the site?
No, there won't be any butchering on site. We'll be using their fertilizer for our bed.
Okay.
You know, their manure fertilizer.
Okay.
I have a question about the animals. These are grazing animals, right? And so they're going to be picking away at the understory. Is there, there doesn't appear to be in the drawing that you have up, Jerry, there appears to be no intention to clear the forest in any of these pasture areas. Now, I I expect that these animals, the feed is going to be brought in for them, but that won't keep them from, you know, roaming around and and attacking the the understory. Is 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 that been thought of as a problem or is am I overstating this? What do you guys think about that? Madeline, what do you, what's your experience with this?
Sure. And you know, Leo can speak to it too, but they're kept in in enclosed areas in fences. So we don't just let them have free rein of understory or anything like that. And yes, you you are correct. We do bring feed in.
So the, for instance, for the it's very small, for the goat pen, that area number J, right, pen number two?
Yep.
Is that the fence line?
Yeah, the most of the fencing is already there.
So that, but that's the fence line for the goats. They are free to roam within that that perimeter?
Yeah, I'll try to get that into the screen so we go.
If I if I am my interject, so this is Leo. So what happens is those areas, the animals, they cohabitate among them. So it's not like one is for goats, one is for sheep, one is for llamas. The llamas provide protection for the sheep and the goats. But the way they are kept is they they're all together and they are moved from between these pens.
I see.
I like so that that they don't just completely kill all the brush. So they move, but most of the feed is brought in.
So this is like the what is the farm called, where they just move them, you move them from pasture to pasture or from-
Botanical grazing is the technical term.
Okay.
Yeah, but these are actually like holding pens because we're not taking any pasture fields.
Got it.
And if I just can add, Leo makes a good point that they are commingled and they all stay together. On the plan, we have it labeled goat pen and lamb pen and and that type of thing. And that's because at the request of the building inspector, we had provided the calculations per the Cornell ag station of the the size of pen needed for the animals you're putting in. So we wanted to make sure that we had adequate pen space and we do. But that's that's why it was so labeled like that, just so we could demonstrate that we are meeting the minimum requirements of pen space for the number of animals that that the farm has.
Well, I I guess I'm not, I mean, I I don't know anything about this, but I'm I'm not convinced that yet that in this however many acres, let's see, number two, looks like it's a little over an acre, number three, about an acre and a half, something like that. So in these in these like, what, two and a half acres in perpetuity, right? Over time, that these animals aren't going to essentially make a relatively large impact on that landscape. I'm not suggesting that that it's like that I want this whole project to go away because I think it's great. But I do wonder if anybody who understands on the town side, who understands these systems has any concerns about how that kind of damage might be mitigated or whether it's a problem or not. I just don't know.
Yep. Jerry, I had a question. As far as I understand, this is New York City DEP watershed property?
I believe it is.
So I I or maybe it's Myenas. I don't know. Maybe some goes to Myenas. I I don't know how it might go, but it seems to flow north, which suggests that eventually it's gonna, you know, well, hit the Kissau River and go into the the Croton. My question is this, we have these grazing animals, et cetera, in these areas and we have headwaters to these streams here. This is often a pollution source, you know, where we have this kind of waste from animals. What what kind of numbers do we have or what kind of mitigation should we see or consider? If any, has that been addressed? And I'm not quite sure. I'm looking at your sketch. I'm not quite sure where the streams really are. They look like them. I'm looking at the which map is it? The chicken pen location map. But there seem to be various blue lines that might be streams.
If you look on the if on my screen, you can see where the streams are. They're right in here.
Right.
These are and they've been classified as intermittent water courses, meaning that they don't all the time. It really is conveying, you know, flow after a rain event.
Okay, so they're not considered to be wetlands at all then, right?
Because they're just- I I think they would probably meet the definition of a wetland. We will. The wetland line is here. The wetland line is is right here. And so here's your hundred and fifty foot buffer line, which is right here. So you can see the animal pens are outside of the hundred and fifty foot buffer line and most of the area between the, you know, the pens and, you know, and and the wetlands here is all vegetative.
Okay.
And and I think, you know, one of the things, I think, why it was important to go through the sizing calculations for the size of the pens for the animals there, I think that we demonstrated that we've really been generous with with the amount of pen space we have for the number of animals. And that is that information is in our cover letter. But I think it's a good point that the board has made and I think maybe what we can do is provide, you know how oftentimes we do these maintenance and mitigation protocols for a period of oh, five years or so after to 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 check on the success or failure of certain mitigation projects that we've done? You know, there may be something that we can put into place that it could be kind of once a year, it gets, you know, we have a look at it. We see, you know, how is how is everything holding up? And and, you know, if some areas are getting damaged, maybe those areas have to be identified. Maybe they have to be fenced off temporarily and stabilized with new planting. So I think there may be some protocols we could put in place to ensure that, you know, there is no long-term detriment to to the to the pen areas.
And and th- these are all good points to put in the planning board's report to the town board, who is entity putting together the special permit. So it could be special permit conditions.
Yeah, and I I I think that's a very good suggestion, Jerry. And and I think I might also suggest that in addition to the pens and the maintenance of vegetation, again, maybe at the border of the property, some sort of protocol just for testing of you know, the quality of the water that's running off the site in that, you know, in those streams. This this non-point off-point or whatever it's called, pollution is 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 real concern. So and this is drinking water, the watershed, so let's be sure that we have the necessary protections in there. I think it's a great idea.
Is is this going to be a working farm or do you also have like an educational component to this where you have people coming in and out?
At the moment, it's just a working farm.
It's a it's not, from my reading the material, it's it's not to be like another muskete, which is you know, an educational thing. Khan, you may be familiar with with that location. And my son actually worked there for a couple of summers, so I know it well. But I think that this is terrific. I mean, we we, you know, want locally sourced food and boy, you're looking at it in this drawing. I think it's a terrific thing. So in addition to our comments about, you know, what may be concerns that turn out to be problems or concerns that maybe, you know, we just want to be sure we understand what's going on. We really, I would like to put in a very positive note on support of the project.
I I completely agree. Eleven years ago, when we moved to this town, we were actually members at Twin Oaks for a year and to see this come out of what was there is is for me a super exciting and, you know, I I I can't wait to actually see this come to fruition. I'm just a question, is this going to be? Are you gonna do like retail sales on site or?
At the moment, because we're sort of just getting our feet wet, so to speak. It's we're just focused on growing on site and then doing sales of things like farmers markets. Those ten years in the future, but you know, for right now, that's the hope is just to grow on site, have it be more of a working farm for right now.
Right. Awesome. Super. Good luck.
Would you all be interested in retail?
I'll take the egg.
Let's let's not confuse the applications.
I know.
And I and I and if I may borrow a llama every once in a while to get the deer off my property, I'm all for that.
I never knew they were used for security. That's very interesting. I mean, to protect the other other herds. Very interesting. Well, this is a a lot the a lot better use than the cell tower, which was one of the other things we looked at, I guess, at this bill a while ago. So well done. And I I I guess what we'll do is we'll put together a memo outlining our our support for the project, enthusiastic support for the project. And I I guess the only issues that we had really was just to embrace some of the suggestions that Tom has made and Jerry supported in terms of some protocols to monitor the vegetation, monitor the off-site water. And is there anything else that anyone's concerned with?
Noise? Do the chickens make enough noise to be heard twelve hundred feet away or whatever it is?
I I I don't know. They they seem to think it's two hundred and fifty, but I I I'm not, I don't have experience with chickens on their noise. Smell, yes, but not noise.
It's not, it's not the-
Well, then smell is another one.
Wow, smells.
It's not the chicken, it's the rooster that makes the noise.
Ah, good point. Very, very subtle, but good. Yes.
And there are no roosters, correct?
Yeah, we don't have a rooster.
Okay.
I mean, I I assume that, you know, that that's why the two hundred and fifty foot setback is is there because it was concerned and 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 there must have been some, you know, discussion about smell and sounds. It seems to me that Jerry's mentioned that that's why it's two hundred and fifty feet. There's also a lot of wooded area in between the houses. So I I would imagine that has been addressed. Sabrina, can you fill us in on that? I I would imagine there was probably a lot of conversation on that issue.
Um, the conversations are still going on, but the two hundred and fifty foot setback is that requirement.
Yeah, okay, right.
Aren't we allowed to keep chickens in in this town? So like people can keep chickens in their backyard?
Yeah, the we have a we have a regulation, yes. And you have to have a certain, you have to have a certain size to do it.
And Tom, how many roosters to, you know, those those properties that can have five chickens? Is it one rooster or?
You're allowed.
Ratio, yes. So so if I may, it that we can draft a memo as you've outlined, Chairman. Would you like that for your signature? Does it need to come back to the board?
I'd like to see it because the, to me, the biggest concern is gonna be the what the quality of the stormwater runoff. And, you know, that's that could really be a problem for a mile or two or three or four downstream, wherever wherever this goes. So I I don't, I've never worked on the environmental issues of a of a farm before, but a lot of other environmental issues and and so I emphasize the one I just said. Stormwater, to me, is the is the biggest problem.
Yep. It's it's surprising how quickly the bacteria seem to accumulate in in these streams from this.
Yeah.
My daughter did a science project on this many years ago and we gathered water from various streams at some of the headwaters of Croton area. And it was very interesting to see how quickly the bacteria count picked up within just feet. Once you get going with animals, septics and whatever. So by the time we got to the Kissau River, it was it was not, it was not pretty. It was ugly. So anyway.
Sure. And I, you all know, my background is in oyster reef restoration in New York Harbor, so I I share your concern of not wanting to, you know, hurt any water bodies. And because of that, we are just using only organic, very, you know, minimal till, very regenerative practices at the farm, you know.
I think calculations are going to be necessary to make sure and and it may be that you have to have, you know, underground treatment systems, you know, sort of like a septic system.
Yep.
Additional.
Yeah, I I echo that. Again, the concern here is this is in the headwaters and drinking water, water supply, so.
Well, this can be can be put into your memo.
Yep, exactly. Alrighty, so we'll 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 have the memo drafted and then we'll we'll circulate it, so everyone can see it.
And then it will be, should it be put on your agenda on June first?
Please. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Congratulations. Well done. Best of luck.
Thanks.
Okay, we now have our two discussion items. One is a referral from the town board on the local law regarding affordable housing in the BR and BRP districts. And it seems to me that that's a nice segue also, if we wish, to incorporate discussion on the changes that Kanon has sent to us on the the draft on the on the form-based code that we've been working on for weeks, months, whatever. And that we're, I think, very close to and should finish up this evening. So with regard to the 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 legislation and the referral to us, I I think all of us support the notion of what we have here in front of us. The only issue that we have, I think, is do we know what the impacts of this law will be? Will it do what we want it to do? What should we consider? What should the town board consider to make certain that we don't have unintended consequences? So will it, in fact, I mean, what we say right here in the in the beginning is provide the opportunity for creation of housing on locations that are conveniently located by the community services and encourage preservation, rehabilitation of of existing buildings. Obviously, the the thing is is to spur more of this this kind of housing. So I guess if you hadn't read it, first five units, no, no requirement. Then from five to ten, one unit has to be included and then ten percent. So basically, it's a an attempt to bring the these two districts, these two zoning districts up to what we see in the rest of the towns, I understand.
It's to bring the business districts into compliance with the affordability requirements of the single-family zoning.
Right.
And and the the BR retail business and BRP retail business and parking districts are where I think they are?
They're in the Chappaqua Hamlet.
Right.
And there's the BR, the BR district is also within the Millwood Hamlet.
Yes, it is. So I I have a question, just a technical question real quick. It's it it uses AFFH. It doesn't define that here. So maybe it's somewhere else in our code. It defines it, the existing. So can you help me? Somebody help me. What specifically does that mean, AFFH?
Affirmatively something fair housing.
And how does, okay, that's what it, that's what it's, that's the title, but what what is affirmatively fair housing? By what criteria does it, does a a unit meet that? You know, past that threshold? Is it a AMI thing or what what would it be?
It is, it is below, it is thirty, it's either thirty, twenty, thirty, sixty or eighty percent of the average median income. Based on Westchester County's calculations.
So areas median income.
Yeah, yes, as determined by Westchester County.
So we could do eighty and not have to do thirty? I mean, it doesn't really break it down here, does it?
It 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 does not break it down. The law doesn't require at this point any specificity regarding whether it's twenty, thirty or eighty percent of AMI.
So it seems to me that would be- So it seems to me that would be, maybe uh Canaan, you and uh Eldad know a lot more about this than I do. But uh, the natural uh tendency would be, I would think, for a developer to go for the eighty. When in fact, I'm sorry, just let me finish, Sabrina. When in fact, uh, maybe the responsible thing is to require some units be fifty. Now, Sabrina, is that not correct or?
That's not correct because um the monies that are allotted to affordable housing developers are are are. Tied up, the financial constraints are tied up with the percentage. And if a developer chooses to do eighty, only eighty percent AMI, then there is no money for them. Or or tax credits for them. So it makes um providing the affordable housing much more difficult.
So. So it's a sliding scale?
Is 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 that how it works out in the end?
That's how it works out in the end.
So the tax credits are allocated by either a state or a county authority. In this case, it seems like it's the county. And the preference is given when, or most of the times, it's affordable housing developers are looking for some sort of subsidy to pencil these deals. And and oftentimes, that is coming through providing lower income group um slots. So you're looking at fifty percent, uh fifty, at least fifty percent AMI as as a cutoff for some of these sort of subsidies. Um, and trying to look for that as um as a way to make up for the for the costs to build.
So when you say at least, Canaan, do you mean that they wouldn't be going to thirty? They would, when you say at least, is that the lowest thing or the highest?
No, some, uh you, they could go down to, in some cases, I mean, in in the city, there are projects which are thirty percent AMI. Some are even for transition between homeless and then going into uh, you know, new housing. So it is, it is funded completely by uh certain, certain programs that are driven by the city. So you get subsidies just to maintain those units.
Right.
Typically, developers are looking for those kind of subsidies if they need to pencil the deal and make it work. And so if they do that and they take those, that money, they would have to bring that kind of housing, that mix of housing in there. At least a certain number of units. It's it's typically a negotiation, but yeah.
Right, of course. So uh, I guess my question is, in not specifying um. If if what level, AMI level, uh developer uh is required to come in at. Um, is, or we, or is there, are you suggesting that the market response to this problem? Pretty much uh is a responsible way to to approach the affordable housing. Uh, criteria, the affordable housing objective by just letting the market decide because this criteria works. By getting, you know, fifty percent on some projects, thirty on others, or are we serving the full range of people who need it? Or do we end up at one end of the range or the other?
Um, so it, in my opinion, if you're going towards, i- if it's mixed income housing. Um, that the developer is trying to build, then obviously there is more money to be made if it's a mixed. Uh, there is higher area, you know, with higher group of rental at market rate. And then smaller groups of, you know, smaller number of apartments that are are restricted, so to speak. So, but I'm not sure, I'm not sure we can actually dictate that. Could say that we would want a certain mix or set in some sort of uh criteria to help. Make sure that they have that mix of uh incomes in that housing collect. That is something we could, we could mandate or require. Uh, but typically, it's something that. Developers are often working with these authorities to make sure that they get the tax credits. And so it's, they go back and forth and back and forth and just see, okay, can I get the subsidy, then let me, I put these units in. And then they go back to the architect and sort of rejig and put some other type of types of housing. Sometimes you have to bring in SROs, things like that. But uh, I think for our type of, you know, our type of community, I can see that it would lean towards eighty percent, sixty percent, eighty percent. Any of my um, and um, I don't know if, again, I don't know what's the mix that we all care for. Or what, how much of it we can actually control.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so so uh, uh, just two things. One is, um, you know, there's a. Uh, a demand and a need for subsidized housing at all levels. Um, and uh, you know, it's it's really case specific and and Canaan is obviously right. That it 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 all comes down ultimately to the funding sources, and so oftentimes, it's multiple sources for for the subsidized uh housing. And so flexibility is is key. Um, uh, but two, and maybe more importantly, what's being asked of us today, I think, is just. Uh, to comment on applying the standard that exists in the rest of the town to these zoning districts. Uh, is that, is that right, Sabrina? I mean, it's it's, this is a standard that exists and language that exists in in.
It is, the county, it's the county recommended standard that the town has um adopted for its single-family zones. The town board wanted to extend the county recommended standard to the business districts in town as well.
Right, um, which makes sense because uh housing is permitted in those districts and um, uh, does that also?
Housing is permitted on the second floor of those districts.
Oh, and um, uh, as far as geographic uh location, does it also, the 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 Walgreens?
That is in the beer, that is in the business retail district.
It is, so that would apply uh uh what I'll call up here also, because I, that's where I live.
Correct.
Um, okay, great.
Um, those, those standards and regulations that Sabrina was referring to that already exist in our code are at sixty dash two twenty of the code. Um, if you have it in front of you, that's, there's a couple pages worth of provisions that the town adopted back in two thousand eleven. Um, uh, that correspond with the the model ordinance that the county was proposing at that time.
And how, thank you, Jennifer. Uh, how does uh this relate to? The proposed, if at all, to the proposed form-based code?
The recommended standard, as you are being asked to consider tonight, is also being um incorporated into the form-based code.
Right.
There has, there has been discussion through the DGIS process to further drill down and understand whether or not. We can um differentiate to get the stratification of income. In 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 the form-based code area that that you guys mentioned earlier in this conversation.
So um.
Sorry, the thing that I struggle with is just, if we're not able to determine the density itself. If we're saying the density is gonna double, then we say fifty percent of that is going to be restricted for lower incomes. Then there is an actual, there's something, there's a, there's an actual number that we can discuss. If, that's the part that I'm struggling with. So either we have options where we say, well, if we densified by twenty percent. And then ten percent, I'm just making this up, or twenty percent of this mix is affordable. Then we're actually talking about the exact number of units, and then, then there is. It it's, I I think it's a little more helpful if if we are able to define uh the density first. And that's what I've struggled with in the form-based code as well. It's just being able to see how and where the total number is being defined.
Well, that's the crux of our, the the, that's the conundrum, conundrum that we have in this whole form-based code is, you know, what is the right density? What's the right bulk, what's the right height? Because it starts to lead into the other uh questions and answers.
So bef- before we uh get into that, um, I, so I will just say on this question that's before us, right? That the 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 town board is is referred this to us to make comments on this. Uh, you know, suggestion or this local law to apply the um, the ten percent affordable housing requirement to these districts. Um, that makes perfect sense to me. I I I am uh super supportive of it because it just applies a standard that exists in. Uh, other parts of our town, and in fact, should apply in these areas because they're, I guess, more, you know, if the point is to. Provide affordable housing, then um, this is the area where they will be most likely to be developed, right? And in areas where you can provide over five units of housing.
It it asks the question, yes, I agree. Uh, I I think that, that just as a baseline, I agree that this is the right place to do it. And I guess I'd ask the question, though, if this is the right place to do it, if this is the, if these are the places where you have the infrastructure, right? Uh, because it's a a business commercial district, if it's because it's like near the train station. Um, does it beg the question of why only ten percent? Why not twenty percent? And that gets back to, I think, Canaan's uh conundrum, I think, the way you express it, Canaan, is that. There's no way to get at a real number in the way in which this is being approached. And the question I'd ask about that is, well, is there a right number or a wrong number? What what sort of number uh or or would one shoot for, you know, fifty units, five hundred units, twenty units? I don't know if the number is really relevant unless you put it in the context of the total sort of affordable housing shortage. In Westchester County, and then you decide to apportion, you know, each community has to take up a certain number. And we need to meet that number. I don't know what the metric is for what the right number is, as opposed to applying a percentage. And maybe the percentage ought to be, you know, more than, maybe it's more than ten percent, maybe it's fifteen, I I don't know. But uh, if we're gonna make a, if we're gonna look at the the history of ten percent. Uh, how many units has ten percent got us in town, right? And is that really so few that we need to maybe, you know, increase a percentage in order to to make, take a bigger bite out of this problem?
Well, I I personally, I think the ten percent that we've seen in the past in the history uh is not uh very illustrative. It seems to me that that was a wrong direction anyway, and not a wrong direction, but another very helpful direction. Because we all know, we've seen projects where we've seen guys, uh, developers come in with ten homes. And then when they heard it was ten percent, they just cut it back down to nine, or they abandoned the project altogether. It it doesn't work that well. Uh, again, I think this is the 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 repair to the town code that is so essential. Because this is the area that makes most sense. The bottom line is, it's gotta work. It's gotta not just work for the developers who build something and then take off. It's also gotta work for the people who live in these units. And work in the community and exist in the community. So I I I see this as something that is fairer and something that works better. For someone working at sixty, eighty percent of AMI, thirty percent, I I just don't think would work ever in this town. I mean, it's just, it's just the economics of it. So uh, it seems to me that this is the place to do it, and and the issue of. I don't know what the right number is, but certainly bringing it up to speed with the rest of the town, the single-family uh residential areas makes eminent sense. And it's certainly, it's it's a minimum, it gives flexibility. I I don't think you want to impose a number at this point where we don't have the information. That will suppress what we hope will happen in in the, in the town, in the hamlets. Because if it's, if it's, you know, so dependent upon funding and and whatever, that's fungible. Those come and go depending upon economics, et cetera. So give the developers the flexibility. Here's the minimum, you gotta make this. If you can do better, let's talk about it. But I I think this is a a great step in the right direction. Um, I don't, I don't, personally, based on my history on the on the planning board. We've seen these single-family developments. I can't think of one uh that was ever subject to ten percent. Um, new construction, ten percent, I can't think of one. All the big ones that we had uh predated the law. And um, I can't, I can think of uh ones that were, where the developer has abandoned the project or reduced it and gotten below the number. But I can't think of a single one. Sabrina, uh, can you think of a single new, single-family home development where we had ten or more units? And this has actually triggered a ten percent requirement?
I can't.
No.
No, so I mean, it's, to Eldad's point, this is, this is where you would do it, and Tom's point, this is where you would do it, so um.
Right, and and right now, there's only one development in the hamlet. Where you have twenty or thirty percent AMI uh for the entire development.
Is that the?
Conifer?
Yes.
Yes.
And, but that was done through the um workforce housing overlay zoning, which required affordable housing. Without a specification of AMI. And that developer, that's where they, you know, that is where their niche is in providing affordable housing.
Right, but.
You know, I just.
Someone might make the observation that uh the building is up and they got paid. Uh, how successful will it be for the folks who'll be moving in there? And that's, you know, we'll we'll see. Exactly, exactly.
That has to be the most expensive.
So we're getting off track.
Yeah, we are.
It's getting late and there's still a good item.
Can we agree that we, we want to issue a memo that is supportive of this uh, this initiative and this law?
Yes.
Or do we have any, any issues at all with it that we want to uh highlight or draw to the attention of the town board? I I'm unaware of anybody. Does anyone have any?
I, you know, to Tom's point about why ten percent and why not more. Um, I would, you know, my my whole point is, if you're going to build a hundred units in in the hamlet. And ten of them are going to be affordable. I mean, the big, the big outcry seems to be about densification. But then, then there is a conversation about, well, we wanna, we wanna bring some of these affordable housing in there. So then, why not a higher percentage? So I feel like something like Conifer, if it were just, you know, if it succeeds and the, and and the jury is out on that. Uh, you have a higher number of affordable housing uh units in the same, you know, in that same complex, right? So I I don't, I don't know where this ten percent number is coming from and.
It's coming from the model, the county's recommendations.
Okay.
But it's a minimum of ten percent, right?
Right, well, right, well, right.
Yeah, so it is.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Canaan.
I, and there is, in my mind, there is no, if if the choice is to build market rate versus affordable. It is obviously going to be market rate in our town for any developer. So the question is, if you're making a choice, it is really town making a choice about how many units we want to bring in. With people who are less than the area's median income, whatever that percentage may be. And so I think it's a, I think it is something that we should definitely think more deeply about. And I mean, I I do understand ten percent is great, that's a great starting point. Um, but that's my, you know, that's just my, my thought process without really um.
But at some point, you, these things become binary decisions. We have a law that's proposed to us. We can sit here and talk all night about what it could be, should be, might be, but we have a law before us and we have to respond to the town board referral. Do we like this? Are we against it? I I can't imagine that we're against it. Why don't we support them and say, you know, it's a great start?
I think that.
Place to do it.
I think that, uh, I'm sorry, Bob, I think the great, it's a great start is the right way to put it. And then, in the same memo, we say, and here's what, you know, maybe is next for you to think about. Why only ten percent, right? I mean, I think that this could be the open door that um, I've sort of been another open door. But maybe the open door to approach the town board and say, you know, there's something that that we need to really look seriously at with regard to this policy. And whether it's really adequate. And maybe the town, this is fine, go ahead and do it, it's great. But uh, that, you know, why in these areas? If if it's ten percent in a single-family residential area, it seems to me that in a, in a multifamily uh development. You know, with all the infrastructure that's available, you could go to fifteen percent, you know, maybe you'd go to twenty percent. We don't know what the right number is.
Right.
But with the the potential for greater density in these areas, there's a, the potential to, for a developer to make it work with the funding or a greater percentage. So maybe that that number ought to change for these districts.
I think that's a good point, Tom. The idea that it the the memo would be kind of a yes and. Um, but Sabrina, I I have a question, um, maybe it's another dumb question. Well, it's it's a multi-part question. Why wasn't this, uh, why didn't the the this uh standard apply to? to the entire town previously? And uh follow up, this is the dumb part perhaps. How? In what way could a affordable housing requirement that starts at five units and above be successful in single family districts?
Not, it's not.
That's zero. We haven't had, we haven't had any.
No, I know, but but even conceptually, like, how could it possibly, like, where, is it just if theoretically I'm doing a subdivision and building 10 homes at once? Is that the idea? Because otherwise if.
The idea is when you get approval, let's say Toll Brothers, 91, 91 townhomes. 10% of that development would have been affordable.
And we did have some uh.
You did.
Just some. We had proposals, we've had some clustered and conservation uh uh applications. And for whatever reason, they were uh beaten down, withdrawn. We we also had this overlay of the DEP regulations, which took care of a proposal for 72 units for Brandywine that ended up being, what, four, five, six, whatever it was. So we've had a lot of these. It could have made uh some impact. But and I don't think this was the reason, you know, this was this law, I don't think was the reason for for these the projects to go away. But we did have some potential out there, some some there. And I think it was a baby step, frankly. That they uh, you know, but to your point, Eldad, again, none of us can recall a single successful new uh development.
But the first, and Sabrina, the first part of the question, uh, do 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 you know, do we know why this didn't apply to everywhere in the town? I mean.
Um, it didn't apply to everywhere in town because in the business areas, there was no first floor residential. And the limitations on zoning would further restrict of, you know, any type of residential um space above that first floor. You you know, so if if you look at the commercial spaces and the limitations of a second floor that exists today, um, there's, they don't equate to enough apartments to even hit this minimum requirement.
Right.
So why would, why would that be, s- sorry, Bob, but.
No, no, go on, go on.
Why, if we were to apply this now, how is that any different than the thinking before?
That's a good point. Good point, because this is really, it's it's really gauged toward, I think, the existing housing stock and renovations. And one of the issues, it seems to me, is by using that zero to five, you're gonna find these applications just coming in for five or fewer applica- uh uh.
There's very few properties in the hamlet today where you will see more than five.
Yep.
So, so to me, that that there's, there's, you know, the the response here is twofold. One is, yeah, I mean, the the affordable housing requirement in our town should be, should apply to the entire town as a blanket period. It should be uniform across the entire town as a, sort of as a matter of course, at its most base level. And um we should really be exploring, like, what is the point of the affordable housing requirement? If that it, if it generates zero affordable housing, it it's, it doesn't, you know, okay, it's the county standard. But we may have bigger problems, which do lead to the other questions and Tom's or email and all that other stuff. But but um but, so it's like, that, from my perspective, the memo is, like I said, yes, and sure, apply it here, apply it, I think blankly, blank, as a blanket to the whole town, period. Even if housing isn't permitted in in any place right now, in in the town of Newcastle, if you build housing, there's an affordable housing requirement and it starts at five units, period. That's what I would recommend uh at minimum. And then there's a subsequent, subsequent question of what are we doing about affordable housing in 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 our town? But this is, seems more like a corrective action than it is a forward-thinking thing, which is just fine.
You know, we're, we're.
And are we talking, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say where it really will have an effect is in large lot development. And uh, we're talking about the town and the land uh as one of those places that you could uh get a significant number one day if the town decides to do that. But there are also, I mean, there 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 are corporate uh, there are corporate properties here that, you know, these, these, these uh corporate headquarters buildings, these corporations, these, these business buildings that are, have large lots because they have parking, they have all that. There are, there are some vacant buildings in this town, which uh are just pretty much lying empty or that surround this town. And I think those areas are actually ripe for this kind of a development. But I think that that the, that the number, the percentage, whatever it is, only really begins to have any effect. I think that, you know, Bob, you made the point, and Eldad, you just made the point, really only have effect in large lot development. Otherwise, it's a, it's a, an addition to the code which has no effect in the end.
Sabrina, if this law goes into effect, will this close all of the gaps? Would this take care of uh of the entire town now and have, as Eldad said, uh, as a matter of policy, impose affordable housing requirements at 10%, whatever it is, across the town?
Except in our IP district.
Oh, the industrial area, okay.
So if we have 3,000 uh dwelling units in the entire town, the idea is that 10% of that will be affordable. Is that the aim here, regardless of where you are?
What the aim is, Canaan, this is, the the, this recommendation came from the county. The town adopted it for its single family zones in 2011. And now they are trying to apply it to the business districts in the community. That's what this law is doing. I I don't have the origin of what the anticipated impact is other than the town board is striving to create opportunities to diversify housing income.
And I think, I think that's Eldad's description, that this is corrective in closing a gap is.
Correct.
Very, very appropriate. I think that's what it is.
And it will, exactly, it will, it will, it'll take a while before we get to that 10% of the total number of dwelling units in the town.
Well, I don't know that.
Well, it's.
Well, that's the objective. I mean, you're assuming that's the objective.
The objective.
No.
Okay. So we can draft a memo in support of and then ask um why they're not considering to increase the percentage, if you would like.
Or just that they should, you know, I think, I don't know about why not, but I think they should consider it, especially in the B, uh, the BR and the BP, BRP districts. I mean, I I, again, if we get too far ahead and developers say, I can't get the funds if we say 20%, 15%. But someone should study this. And I think that's the segue into the next uh issue as well.
So I I just want to, to that point, um. Developers will be able to, it's not like you cannot pencil a, an affordable housing project. Because there are subsidies and there are methods to actually get to providing it. So it's not, it's not that you cannot, the economics of it would not allow you to build affordable housing, because.
My Conifer's 100%.
Exactly. So that it's subsidized, there are tons of, you know, there's, I I don't know.
Conifer's development could not occur within the BRP zoning district.
Why, why is that?
Because the, the, the property that Conifer's uh building sits on was identified for workforce housing.
Oh. How did that happen?
That was done. Supervisor use ago. The workforce housing requirements in the code required specific locations for workforce housing to be located. And along the train line was one of them, was the primary factor for that.
So there was a legislative action?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, but there's no, the, 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 if you look at the number of units that are the makeup of our affordable housing, there, the lowest that they go is 28 units. Anything under 28 is typically developed by a local developer. And the question of whether or not it is affordable to develop with that requirement comes to bay and you have seen them pull away. And it it, I don't know if any of you recall, but when Conifer was going through their process, this is the smallest affordable housing development that they've ever built.
No, because the site was. Or what else were, I mean.
That was a criteria.
It could have built it on the tracks.
Right, but we also have in our, in our business districts, height restrictions and lot setbacks and restrictions that are prohibitive to large buildings.
Yep.
How about, how about, uh, this is, I don't want to really discuss this for another hour, uh, type of thing. And I'm, I'm gonna bring up a point, but, you know, one of the other things that happens uh is there is a drumbeat, slow, it's, it's a slow drumbeat for accessory apartments on properties. And it's all voluntary. And it's based on the economics of the owner of the property, what he thinks or she thinks. And I'm wondering whether that if the, how the state could get involved with that, with funding to enhance uh the use of accessory apartments, that would work uh throughout the town. It's a question of money, is what I'm saying. But I don't think we can fit that in this now, but it's something to think about going forward. Because certainly the people that are in accessory apartments, they're not there because they're rich. They're there because they're starting out, they're maybe finishing, uh, you know, their life, whatever. So it's, to me, it's a missed opportunity to somehow get involved with that. But I don't think that fits in here yet today, but there's a couple of things. That, it's one thing, anyway.
So have we decided what this memo should say?
Yeah, we say, I think what Sabrina said before.
We need a motion.
Is there a motion?
There's a motion. There's a motion, there's, there's a motion uh to write a memo to the town board supporting this uh initiative to expand the affordable housing, whatever, yada, 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 to the business districts. Uh, and uh it, the memo should also say that, I don't know what the right wording is, but that further uh investigation, further discussion of the appropriate, or the, I don't know what the right words are, for uh more, more than 10% or modify more than 10% uh requirement is something that maybe could be investigated.
Yep.
Two seconds.
Two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. All right.
What I'd like to do is screen share the memo that Canaan marked up to focus your attention on that section and your.
Great, thank you.
So bear with me a moment.
We get paid by the hour, right?
Yep. And and the later it gets, it's even more pay. It's overtime.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but zero plus zero.
Take your salary and we multiply it by two.
Time, time and a half.
So on page uh, page six?
Page six.
Let me know when you can see my screen.
Got it.
Yeah, we can see it.
Can you read it or do you need me to enlarge it?
No, we got it.
Page six, looks good. There we go.
Yeah, you can.
Oh.
I can make it bigger.
Yes, please.
I have one comment to, oops, there we go.
I think above this, there was a change. Yeah, right there.
Yeah, I moved that over to the housing section.
Okay.
Um, so if you go down, you'll see that, that.
Yes.
Point starts with that, where.
Okay, that makes sense.
So I, uh, could you scroll up a little bit there? Uh, that's good. Uh, I have a comment to the sentence that starts, the town board could engage. Uh, it says, would, to, and and explore financial constructs with experts in mixed income housing to make, to make such housing feasible in the hamlet. I think that it should say financial constructs, as there's to make, I mean, the, the, the expiration is not gonna make the housing more feasible in the hamlet.
Yeah, good point, sorry.
It should be something like to investigate whether or to, well, I had the right term a minute ago, it's, it's late.
I mean, how, how to make such housing feasible?
Yeah, that's good. Just put how in there.
Well, I would say how, I would say how you attract more of these options. Because the key here is we're trying to attract developers, we're trying to attract attention, seems to me. And again, I I have an issue with what I, this is becoming, which is, I think, too much of a single loaded uh weight toward only this affordable housing. Again, I go back to the charge on this, and from my standpoint, it is a diversity of housing options, including affordable. So I, we keep losing this. And one thing I I raised early on in this and and never got any traction on, no one ever mentions it, but no one ever mentions senior housing. There's no attention whatsoever to senior housing. And again, senior housing in a hamlet is absolutely ideal. That's where you would want it. Not out in the sticks and single family. So we have workforce, we got affordable, we got market, we've got people who want to downsize. All of these are are the options. And and again, my takeaway on this was this is just single loading toward affordable housing only and to the detriment of these other options. And I believe a robust downtown with housing needs all of these elements.
So. If you go up further, uh, like a paragraph up, I think we were talking about, no, 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 right there.
Right there.
So you're talking about uh analysis of multifamily housing types and their sustainability. Such types could include an appropriate mix of affordable units, workforce, live work, senior living, fee simple, rental, and range of studios, suites and multi-bedroom apartments.
Right.
Um, I think that's where we put it. And then we talked about the Cupola building. And I think the only sentence I added after that was, what is it that we should sort of pick up from the Cupola building, which I think we discussed when I was there last? Um, so there is a little bit about ideally utilizing some of the lessons learned here with other well-integrated mixed income communities. Um, so that's the different, that's the change I made there.
Yep.
The question that, when you want to hear, I, the, the, we, we have a sentence that says, the Cupola building is a, is landmark, repositioned, adapted to new use. Great. This building has achieved some success? Is that's it?
It's actually, it it has run, won awards for what it's done.
We can call it has a claim, has achieved success in a.
A claim success.
Okay.
Well, I'm happy with just plain success, but.
Well, okay, fine.
Then the next sentence, I don't understand. It has sensitivity done.
It has sensitively done. Uh, it is sensitively, I I guess.
It is sensitively.
Yeah, it is. It is sensitively done and is inclusive of all fa- of all families. So I guess the idea there was ideally utilizing some of the lessons learned here, yeah.
It is sensitively done. That's good. All right.
So uh, can I uh go down to, again, the town board could engage? Instead of saying how to, it should say that make such housing feasible, such how, that makes such housing feasible. Financial constructs that make such housing feasible in the market. They're gonna explore the construct, constructs that make housing feasible in the con, in the hamlet.
So I I'm sorry, Tom, where are you?
They'll go down to housing.
So just, uh, so he's saying take out with experts in mixed income housing.
No, no, that's okay. That's okay. Uh, so let me, let me just read it to you and see if it works. The town board could engage and and explore financial constructs with experts in mixed housing that make such housing feasible in the market. Because it's the constructs that make the housing.
Yep.
Good point.
Okay, thank you.
And then I think um. And then I think, um, I know, Eldad, you said something about the 3D. I didn't put that in, but I left it there because I thought it was a good idea to talk about, exploring density with, uh, you know, 3D models. It was already in there, so I just sort of kept it in there. I don't know, did you have a different opinion?
Just that, um, uh, you know, I'm not against the, the, the concept, uh, per se, but just specifically if we're talking about North Greeley, I mean, I, 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 I don't believe that 3D models of different structures should be, should be presented for this specific area, only because, I mean, these are private, it's private property. I mean, who's going to present the 3D models and who's going to make these choices and, and to what end? It just seems like it's actually raising like the specter of like, uh, you know, a charrette, a charrette, a charrette or something. Um, but it's, it's private property and either we have zoning that allows development or we don't, but the.
Yeah, so I didn't put this nu- North Greeley, uh, test case, maybe it really wants to be eventually tested on the town prop on land, but again, I'm, I'm okay. My only point that I would have liked to make is that whatever these, whenever we study these density options, a good way is to bring, you know, bring the study out to the public, into public workshops.
Definitely, so, so, so I, I mean, I agree that, uh, charrette's public workshop, 3D models, um, makes sense for town on land when we're there, I just don't think it makes sense for the private property.
Okay.
Okay. I, I liked, uh, you know, the, the idea of having the 3D models.
I, I moved 3D models, um, to that, this is what I am recommending, tell me if you agree. A fundamental consideration such as studies, the level of housing density that might be required to find the acceptable density, public workshops with 3D models.
Okay.
Of different structures.
Different density str- I guess, yeah.
Of different structures could be created, uh, could be provided.
Could we use the word, um, desirable instead of acceptable? You said it, it sounds like you're settling for something.
There's another acceptable, uh, a fundamental consideration.
Yeah.
The line before that.
Well, except, yeah, acceptable has a few things that could come from it. Who is, as I recollect, like, one of the criteria is that if you're going to have a whole bunch of affordable housing, there has to be a food source nearby.
Still what?
That's not a requirement of affordable housing.
It's not a requirement?
It is not, you need to have a bus line or a train station.
Bus line or a train station, that's, that's next to useless, but okay. All right, fair enough.
All right. Is everyone okay with the blue, I mean, just, you know, I, I am not deleting unless you see a red line across it, unless it is already deleted.
Oh, good, so far.
So we're on page seven of seven.
Yeah, so this was, you know, this is where I was sort of raising the questions that they should try to answer. And I think that's what we were doing with bullet points in every section. So the attempt here was to bring in the financial conversation that was in the architectural section. I brought that in here as the first point. The second was to sort of answer more to the question of equitable, you know, providing some level of equitable housing, uh, bringing in, um, a framework of different income groups. I wanted to sort of reset the, the conversation that you guys had and I heard some of the, I, I heard the meeting that, you know, and the comments you have back and forth on social justice. And I, this was my take on it where it's really about economic realities and less about, you know, race and gender, you know, race and, and, I, I mean, it does, it does come down to finally the way it bears out in society. Races have gotten the neck, but I feel like the conversation that we really need to talk about, or at least I feel are strongly driven around the positive impact of, um, providing housing, uh, to group, to groups of people who would not otherwise be able to live in this town. And it mainly centered around stable housing and education, which would literally improve the lives of, you know, certain families. And again, I, I sort of go back to, even if it's 10%, great, if it's 10%, it's great. Those 10, 10 families are going to have a better outcome and there are study after study showing that and it should be considered, so this was me.
Well, um, again, uh, my, my first comment on the first bullet is the second sentence, the second question is kind of a duplication of the first, I don't think we need it. But aside from that, the second bullet, again, from my standpoint, is uh, all about affordability and I think it misses the mark of what we're supposed to be doing and what I would recommend that we do. And that is, um, we all recognize that affordable housing is an element here. But again, I think by doing it and writing it in this way and emphasizing this, we also therefore we ignore what we heard from our community would said. We want a place for young people to come to get a start. We want a place for people to downsize and stay in town. We want a place for seniors to go, we want a place for workforce people to be teachers, police, et cetera. So I'm sorry, I, I just don't buy into this, uh, single loaded emphasis on, on affordability. I think this is more appropriate, uh, again, as the, uh, addendum that Eldad may want to write, go write probably to the town, but uh, I'm, I'm, I don't support this. I think it misses the mark and I, I've continued to say this week after week after week. I am for housing options and I think that's what will drive the success of this hamlet. Not just affordability, not just workforce, not just seniors, but a mix, a dynamic mix. And I, you know, I don't have the answers as to what that mix should be. But, uh, I'll be darned if I'm going to sign onto something like this that just talks about affordability and emphasizes that to the detriment of others, I think it just detracts from, uh, the other important issues.
I, so I just want to explain, when you talk about a mix of, mix of different types of units, you are talking about different economic constraints, uh, whether we say it or not, that's what we are talking about and I'm okay if we don't say it, but when we say, housing for the senior, housing for the, the very young and housing for, um, you know, we are talking about.
No, I disagree, I don't think so.
Not necessarily.
If you have seniors who want to just downsize, they, they could be some of the richest people in town. They just want to get rid of their house and they want to be in town with their kids. So not necessarily, I think a lot of assumptions are made with this kind of language and I just disagree with it. I think it's wrong, I think it's inaccurate. That's just me.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I think it's, and a lot of things are going to change too. I mean, we have, uh, we have a bit of inflation right now and it may continue and that may change how seniors, for instance, you know, exit their existing housing, I mean, because, you know, it, 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 um, you know, it certainly isn't the, the, uh, the way that the, uh, the big housing project that Chapel Crossing is going to be, those are all going to be, you know, priced in at 800 to a million dollars a unit. Just to live, you know, 10 feet away or five feet away from your neighbor. That, that isn't going to cut it, but we find that we're all poorer, uh, you know, over the next few years, then, you know, then the kind of housing you're talking about here should include, you know, the elderly. It clearly should, you know, bring it up. I mean, it's not, doesn't say age-based anywhere, but, um, so I have to agree that.
You're saying that the emphasis should be not just on incre- income levels, but, um, driven by different needs of our community in their lifespan, right? So you're talking about younger folks don't need a bigger unit than they, and then the downsizing of seniors. And I think that is, that's fair that we should talk about different types of, you know, the unit type. I think the way I saw.
We've talked about this before, it's the underserved elements in our current housing, the single-family housing does not serve everyone and I think that's the issue, that's why people were so interested in housing in the hamlets because it was an opportunity to answer that, that demand for underserved people and it's, it's not, it's not necessarily just, um, affordability, it's not, you know, it's, it's, it's all different kinds of needs and demands. People just want to be in, in a town, they're, they've had it with a, a single-family house on two acres and cutting their lawn and painting their house, sorry, four years and they'd like to be in a dynamic hamlet and live there, i- in their town.
There are units, there are, there are.
You say the word dynamic though, that brings in it needs a draw, other than.
Well, that was, I think that's some of the words that were used.
I, I, I think that, 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 um, yeah, Bob, I think you're, you're right about that, that there are more impediments to people moving into the hamlet than economic ones. There is the availability of a unit type that they're looking for. And that goes to, you know, some young, uh, person or young couple who works in Manhattan, works in IT, wants to get on the train and go down there and make lots of money doing that and come home to an apartment in, you know, in, in, in the chapel hamlet. And they can't do that because there are no apartments in Chapel Hamlet that suit his lifestyle. Uh, and you talked about the seniors, I think there's, that's another demographic group, there may be some people in between because, you know, demographics get messy. And so I think it's much more than, it's, it's not that it's not about economics, but it's much more than economics, there's a broader, there's a broader.
But it's almost like we need to make two points here, the second point needs to be that a mix of, you know, I think we're saying that above, uh, the way I saw these, these three sort of bullet points was more about what are the questions we want them to, that are before them for a discussion, which is.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about that. It, you start the second bullet with, do we want to engage in the debate of our times? I'm sorry, but I think the debate of our times might be whether, I don't know, represented democracy can survive the 21st century. I think the debate of our times might be whether we're all going to be, you know, underwater on the coastline because of climate change. You know, the debate of our times might be that we, we, we really need to challenge China in the third world, otherwise they're going to be eating our lunch.
No, I, I agree, Tom, that's.
Okay, I'm sorry, I went, I went a little bit too far.
There's no need to, I believe, I agree.
Um, and I understand it's, it's, everything you say here is true. Uh, I don't disagree, well, other than that.
And I wanted to move that, you know, that conversation away from race and, you know, that aspect of it, it is an economic reality and I, I think it is important for the town to consider it. And I also agree with Bob that this is not the only question that needs to be considered. So I would almost maybe shorten this, this and put in another, uh, bullet point, which talks about, uh, you know, resilient communities that are able to house, uh, folks of all walks of life and all ages to be able to live and thrive. And, uh, that requires more diverse housing, more diverse unit types. And, uh, that is definitely a consideration that the town, town board should.
So, so what this bullet does, uh, I think, I think if I boil down this bullet, what it's saying is that, um, people want to move in town for the Chapel School District. And that people have a right to, the people who can, you know, find a way to get in through whatever policies the town has, uh, they have a right to have that education because it's good for everybody. Uh, I, I have a problem with the planning board making a statement about the Chapel School District that way. I just, it's inflammatory really, because that's going to not make us.
No, that's a fair point, I thought about it, uh, because I was making that jump there. But really, it is about stability of housing and a good education, right? So that has, the point I wanted to make here is if we are considering, if we are considering densifying, it is, it is, it behooves us as a community, uh, to think about what will they, you know, what kind of positive impact we, will we have on our, you know, in our, in our town, even if it's not the debate of our times. But it's a question of like, how, whose lives can be improved by how much? Because there are enough studies out there that are showing that every single family will be housed in a more stable condition and go to good schools, you are generationally improving the outcomes. And I, that's, that's the point that we should focus on and not really get into any of those conversations of, you know.
I, I disagree with that again, because again, it's, it's one dimensional and, uh, it's one dimensional in that it's again, leads only to this economic issues and, and again, I, I've said it before, I think the issue here in housing is developing a strategy that serves the underserved, uh, people, uh, interests, community members, um, and, and, and ultimately, whatever that mixes, I'm not sure, I have no idea what it is. But ultimately comes up with the most successful, robust hamlet possible. Um, I, I, there's, there's no disagreeing with anything you say, the, the, these are, these are facts. But this is, this is not our policy, our policy is not just to be taking care of this social issue, it seems to me, this is not for me. Um, it is, it is under, there are other underserved people as well. So to say that, yes, we will improve them with education, yes, but we will also improve someone's lifestyle if we have a place for some young single guy or some young single woman who's working Manhattan to have a place to stay. We will have a better place if we have a place where the volunteer fire department guys can live. Um, all these things are blended, so again, I, I just think it's, 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 I, I, I just really, I'm pushing back on what I believe is a very one-dimensional, uh, perspective, uh, that is over emphasizing, uh, the affordability mix.
Would it help, would it help if we broke it down into two, like, forget about that, this whole statement, if I were to, if we were to break it down and say, like we said, we talk about how we would provide different types of income, housing units that would be supportive, which I sort of bring in on the last one, right? Where, what are the parameters to make mixed income housing viable, resilient? Um, I did not put discriminatory, but that's fine, I think that's true as well. There are many lessons to be learned from other projects around the community, around, around the country that can be contributed. So this is, to me, this is more, uh, a debate, you know, this is things that we are providing the town to think about when they think about what kind of housing to bring. So yes, one is unit, different types of housing units to accommodate all walks of life, or, or, you know, all wa- all ages of, of groups of people who are already living in our town. And then the question is, who, who is, who else is coming in and are we making it any, any more just, or I mean, I, and I guess it is a social construct, but it is, the question is, are we allowing, we're talking about affordability and that is bringing in the volunteer firefighter, it is bringing in the nurse and it is bringing in these folks of people who are, um, basically not able to live here unless we bring in some level of economically.
Well, here, how about, how about, um, um, the, I don't know what the right preamble is, but it, it's got to be short. But that the objective is to be sure that, that is, not to be sure, but to suggest that the town, um, when they address the question of, and look at the question of multifamily housing, that they ought to be, uh, looking to, um, uh, provide housing for, uh, uh, all age groups, all occupations and, and incomes. So that gets you to, right, the age demographic, that gets you to, you know, the firemen and, and, you know, the guy who's going downtown and making a bunch of money and coming back to a studio apartment and, and, and it gets you to the income question that we need to be providing housing for a range of incomes.
Yeah, so one thing that I think Eldad's comments made, made very clearly, which is missing here, and I think it's a housing issue, right? Is, is a question of, when we talk about affordable housing, we're saying that we, we as a town are considering making a decision to bring in, like we. like we said earlier, 10% of these folks to be at less than the area's median income. That has a massive impact on who the, you know, what their outcomes are. And I think that's the point that Eldad's trying to make. And I think it's a, you know, when I said debate of the times, like, that's where I was going with it. I think that, that is such an important point right now for everyone to consider, where do we stand on it? It's not with that we are giving them, we're not, we're not giving our, we're not saying this is our decision. We're just saying this is a point of discussion that the town needs to have and come up with a solution. That was.
Okay, that's very good. First I would suggest that I don't, I'm, I'm not sure that the people, I mean, I'm, I'm guessing the people on the town board understand that any, any family which is able to move any, uh, let's just say disadvantaged, currently disadvantaged family.
Right.
Or disenfranchised family that moves into Chapacaw, that it's going to be a, a, a massive, going to put them in a massively different position with regard to opportunities in life for them and for their children.
Right.
Quality of life. You know, I, I, I don't think we need to preach to them about that. I think that they, they sort of understand that. And I worry about terms like massive. I mean, they just, it's just a little bit sort of, you know, over the top. I, I think that sentence like that kind of turn people off, like this isn't a serious person who's talking to me. Um, not that they would disagree with, with the, with the content of what you're saying. It's the way in which it's said, which sometimes is a, can be a problem. And I screw up that way all the time. So as you all know, so, um, I, again, I agree with Bob. I do not think we need to be preaching to the town board and not, not suggesting that we are in this, but I just want to be sure that we aren't preaching to them. I think that it's a much broader conversation about than just the economics. I think it's a conversation that it comes out of the comp plan of opportunities for everybody, right? And I think that it's the way to make that statement is to define everybody. And everybody is defined by age, occupation and income. And the rest of it, you know, it just flows from the logic of that statement, the consequences of that statement. Um, you want to invite people into the town, make it possible for people who otherwise couldn't afford it. We're going to, you know, create this 10% for the income. Maybe it should be 20. I don't know. That's a different debate. Maybe this prompts that debate as our last memo would.
That's what I, that's what I'm saying, that it's meant to really engage in that debate.
Right, exactly. I, I do not disagree with that at all. I think that it's something that needs to happen. I think that we need to be, uh, approach the subject in a way which encourages it to happen, right? Uh, rather than, uh, discourages it to happen. So, uh, you know, just trying to modulate the language. And I agree with Bob that the, the income, uh, providing housing for the disadvantaged is a good thing, but is, it is not the thing, right? It's part of the thing. And so we need to be sure we put it in that context. And Sabrina's been typing away.
Yeah, I'm just trying to read that Sabina, if you can make it slightly bigger for me. The town, the town board should, I'm just going to read. So we've taken out that second point and then we're saying the town board should look to provide a diversity of housing of all age groups and all ranges of income.
Do you want to put in?
I, I made it more simple, so.
I think we said this earlier on in this memo, didn't we? Where we, we asked to provide a broad, broad number of options of housing. It's kind of vegetation, what we said earlier.
It is.
And I think we should use the same language. I think it belongs here, but I think we should use the same language.
Yeah, it's up there where it says.
I was in another section.
Include appropriate mix of housing.
Yeah, that's, that covers it.
Right in the end, yeah.
What's a live work unit?
It's where you can, you literally live on the top floor and you have like a studio below. And it opens out to the street, so almost like a shop.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like a cobbler in a medieval town.
Yep.
Yeah. I mean, in the northwest, um, around Seattle and Vancouver and that region, it's sort of come back and take in a couple.
Dick, you want to help us with the EG here?
I, I don't like the, I don't like that. I, you know, the, why do we have to have uniformity and what the units look like both from inside and outside?
Uh, this was not here. It was up, it was up there. I think you brought it from.
Um, okay.
Yeah, that, that's a requirement in the code, existing, the uniformity requirement.
So it's redundant. There's the, the test hasn't happened anywhere. Anyway, we can just take it out.
What policies establishing underrepresented, underdeserved in a community, that's good. Town board should look at, okay. So here is the point of mixed income housing, making it viable and resist resilient. There are many lessons we learn from other such projects around the country that have implemented mixed income rules. And I try to talk about mixed income because rather than talking about, you know, affordable housing, because that's a very, it's almost a financial construct.
Right, understood. I'm beginning to understand the difference in all these things finally.
What do we mean by underrepresented? I have to understand, but the term would be by underrepresented, I believe that I represented.
Sorry, your voice is just.
What do we mean by underrepresented in that?
I think, again, I think that came from up about, but it, you're talking about folks who don't live in this community and are not represented in this community. It could be a nurse, it could be a firefighter, it could be, it's again, and, and aged person, it could be.
Well, is, does that, is, yeah, and under, underserved within the community, I don't understand what that means either. I mean, a, a, a nurse who lives here can shop at the same store I shop in, get the same public services I get.
Yeah, it could. It's fine.
Yeah, that's fine.
Needs a bullet.
I would say have appropriate, successful mix of housing, but just make, again, appropriate sounds very, uh,
Inadequate, yeah.
Oh, me.
A bullet point.
It's all good.
It's not letting me.
Oh, it's okay.
You don't have to take it up. Yeah, and then hit it in.
Oh, well.
I hate word.
Uh, we'll fix it.
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you for sticking with us.
So I think we want to say establish a successful mix of housing. Is that what, is that the word you wanted to use?
Uh, maybe successful is not the right word, but something that's better and stronger than appropriate.
I think, I think successful is a good word. I mean.
Okay. If I could still.
It has to be beyond just an equity problem, that, you know, everybody's going to have the same crappy housing. You know, you want a successful mix, which allows growth of the family unit. I, I like that. It's much better.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know what successful means in this sentence.
Yeah, it doesn't.
I don't get it.
Well, it's in the eye of the beholder, but it's.
Well, there you go.
Being unsuccessful.
How about successful and appropriate?
Appropriately successful.
Appropriately successful.
Hey, there you go. Successful, I don't.
Now we're punchy.
Yes, we are punchy. That's right. Punchy, punchy.
So is that, so where are we?
Wait, what, what are the parameters to make mixed income housing viable and resilient? Yeah, I think this one sort of ends, um.
You know, we don't have it in front of us, but maybe what we should do Sabrina is just grab some of the words from the comp plan that talks about housing and use those words. If it was successful or resilient or, you know, robust or whatever.
We don't use successful or resilient, um.
You know what I would say? Es- establish a mix of housing as envisioned in the comprehensive plan.
Perfect, perfect. Tie it in the plan. That's great.
Again, Tom?
Uh, establish a mix of housing, establish a mix of housing as envisioned in the comprehensive plan.
Perfect. Perfect, tie in the planning, that's what's great.
It's a foundational document, so.
Yep.
Yeah, good.
Good to end on a high note. Oh, wow.
All right. So we're good. So we can finalize this?
Yeah, I think so.
Format.
Can I say two things?
Please.
One, one is, um, you know, I've stayed quiet for this portion only because, um, you know, this is a, this is being recorded and all that in public forum. And so, so I just wanted to be on that, you know, I, I've, I've made my, my, uh, positions clear on this. I've stayed quiet this, on this issue this evening only because in the interest of time. Uh, and so, um, you know, the language here that we've settled on is fine. Um, but, um, so that's the one thing and, uh, just why I've been quiet, not because I don't care. Obviously I care. Um, but, uh, two is, um, the side or parallel, uh, memo addressing social justice. Um, that language I think is set, I mean, I haven't made any, uh, changes to it, except, you know, beyond what we had most recently discussed. And, um, I invite you all to, um, uh, sign on to it. And Sabrina, I mean, we can chat offline or another time, but just as far as how that can be delivered in, uh, again, in parallel with, with this document.
Um, Eldad, I had sent you the track changes of that, so I will need your, you to send that back to me with everything accepted.
So sorry, okay.
Okay, and then, um, I'll work with Jen as to how we do that.
Okay.
Okay.
And I just want, I want to think, Tom, your email, uh, was super appreciated by me that you sent just around the, the, the topic of exclusionary zoning and I begun a response, but, uh, it's going to take me a little, a little while longer, but I don't want it to, you to think that it was ignored or not appreciated, uh, or not seen. It's.
Thank you for that. It, it took me more than, it took me more than a day to put that together.
Clearly, clearly. So it'll, it'll take me more than a day to respond.
You know, the, you know, the, the, you know, the old saying, if I had more time, I would have written you a shorter letter.
Yeah, exactly.
I just ran out of time.
Great. All right. Is there a motion to close the meeting?
Don't move.
Guys, adopt this?
Well, let's do more.
But yeah, is a motion to, uh, adopt this, uh, this revised version?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi, any opposed? If not, the motion is carried. And is there a motion to close the, uh, meeting?
A move.
Second?
Second.
All righty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.